December 21st meeting of the Congress City Planning Board, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Counselor Pierce.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Smithmire.
Here.
Member Santa Cruz.
Here.
Member Savage.
Here.
Member Fox.
Here.
That's why she's got a name tag. All right, so we have a quorum, so we will move forward. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to determination of completeness. We have one item on our agenda tonight for determination of completeness. 5A is Hayner Swanson LLC on behalf of Brady Sullivan Properties LLC requests a major site plan and conditional use permit, CUP, approval for conversion of existing building into an 80-unit multi-family complex at 11 Stickney Avenue in the Opportunity Corridor. This is a determination of completeness only component. There won't be any public testimony. If you're interested in this project, I do recommend going in and taking a look at the plan set and the elevations. They are fairly extensive, so we'll be taking public testimony on that next month. Would someone like to make a motion to determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the planning board hearing for January 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have design review applications by consent on our agenda next, so any of you that are here for, excuse me, items 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, or 6E, if you have any questions, concerns about those applications, if you could please make yourself known. If not, we will ask the board if there's any members of the board who have any concerns about these applications. Suzanne?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused with the one on Pleasant Street.
6E, okay, so we'll pull 6E from the agenda. In the audience, what we do is we've seen all of these applications, we've looked at them, architectural design reviewers looked at them, they're put into consent, so we don't have to address them one by one. With that note that we'll pull 6E, would someone like to make a motion to approve 6A, B, C, and D as submitted with architectural design review recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's open the public hearing on 6E. Thomas Wilson on behalf of Remy Hezenga requests ADR approval for the construction of a balcony at 58 Pleasant Street in the Civic Performance District. Questions on that application, Suzanne?
Well, I guess it's the balcony. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why is that something that became before? Is it because it's not allowed, or it's a balcony that has no door? It's like, I don't know what it is?
Yeah, please.
So he's converting that into a duplex to residential housing units, and the balcony is proposed to, you know, sort of create a feature there for the upstairs unit. It requires a building permit, and that is in a performance district. So since it's a building permit in a performance district, it requires design review.
But there's no door.
There's a window that he's turning into kind of like a Juliet balcony.
Oh, so that you can climb out the window?
No, he will change that into, it will be converted into a door to walk out.
So you will be able to climb out?
Yeah, my understanding, you go ahead.
I'm looking at the dimensions that they're showing, and if I kind of calculate the dimensions rightly, the door's about four feet tall.
It's definitely short, and they're gonna change the rake. I saw they're gonna change the rake. Is the applicant here?
I do not see him here.
They're gonna change the rake on the, not rake board, but the facade of the outside of the dormer to allow for a door to go in, but it's definitely not gonna be a full-size door.
And is that even legal then?
No, I don't.
As an exit point from that second unit?
It's not an access point, I do know that.
Is it considered emergency exit though in any way? I just don't, is that allowable by code to do a door that doesn't?
The space is supposed to recess into the room there, so part of the, so the roof is gonna be cut back, and part of the room will be converted into the balcony. So I am unclear on the height of the door, but it definitely has to go through code review, which is not necessarily what we're doing here. We're looking at the outside of the building.
Yeah, I just.
But code will not allow it if it's, Bob Nadeau with code reviewed it, but it will be reviewed by the building code department.
Okay, 'cause I was just trying to understand, 'cause these elevations don't make it look like the roof is being changed or the building's being set back in.
If we're looking at the aesthetics of it, yeah, I would say like aesthetically, it looks like it was tacked on. It has nothing to do with anything with that building.
So architectural designer view did weigh in on theirs. They had questions about the colors, didn't specifically address that it wasn't, it was a, you know, appendage on the outside. They did mention that it was gonna be used to look out and access, so you would be able to access it through a door.
Yeah, they talked about the style of the balcony, yeah.
Yeah.
And why wasn't it more reminiscent of the porch?
Why didn't the balusters match the downstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted it to be more penetrable, so that it wasn't, didn't feel like closed in.
So we're looking at something that they say it's going to be, but it's not actually documented with drawings of what it's going to be. Like what you were saying about the, I mean, I would just feel uncomfortable because to me it looks like something that's just thrown in front of it, and then I think if someone's gonna stand on it, it has to be structurally sound.
For sure.
And there has to be a purpose, and if people are climbing out of a window to go on a, it just seems like a little extreme for me.
So no, no climbing out of windows is proposed.
But you're not gonna prevent somebody from climbing out of a window?
They're saying it's gonna be a door, is what they're saying, not a window. It shows a window, it doesn't show a door.
There's a guy standing there, which is a silhouette of a person.
Right.
Very small guy.
So they'll convert it to a door and then change the rake line up on the roof?
Shouldn't they show that?
I mean, if that's...
I, it wasn't clear to me that they didn't. I didn't look that closely at the elevations. ADR members didn't ask these questions, so it didn't, so I wasn't questioning whether they should or should not have, should have more information.
Yeah, I guess I would say I'd like to make a motion that we kick it back to ADR, and they come in with something that actually shows the door and the changes in the rake and things, because...
Yeah, I don't think it needs to go back to ADR. ADR weighed in on their piece of it, which is the physical look of it. I think it can come back to us.
That's fine, but it sounds like ADR has some questions too.
So how far does it stick out? Does that not stay on the elevations?
Yeah, it does. It sticks out over the existing, into the, into the area, not over the sidewalk. So it's over, it's on the elevator, in the Looking West on Federal Street version, it's in your packet, C4.
Oh, so it's still the building in line with the building?
It's just gonna hang out over the top of the second floor.
And so does it return there?
Yeah, it comes back around, wraps up, and touches the roof again.
But it's not on top of that feature?
That's what it looks like.
Existing is this.
Right.
Well, if you want to make that motion, Jeff, to kick that back.
Yeah, I mean, if they're proposing a door, yeah.
Further discussion, we can do that.
I would, please.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I would.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, second?
Second was David.
I got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so just for the record, it'll, just needs, they need to come back to us, not to ADR, but we need some details on what they're trying to do. The question regarding egress, if it's gonna be used for emergency egress. I don't think it is.
Or just, yeah, show the door.
Show the door, show us what you're gonna do. Is it gonna be a four-foot door with a little point on the top that's gonna open oddly? All right, so that carries us over to section seven on our agenda tonight, and again, I didn't mention at the beginning, we are gonna hear all the items on the agenda, so if you're here for an item, we're gonna hear it, hopefully in timely fashion. Item 7A, if we could read 7A, when we read it in the record? Matthew in Barwin Barnett requests a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow a second driveway where is otherwise insufficient frontage for a second driveway at 22 Harvard Street in the single-family residential RS district. If we could get a quick staff update on that. Is the applicant here?
I don't see her. I emailed her yesterday, I hadn't heard back. So this, this couple is trying to get a place to park their RV, the van essentially, a smaller RV, on their property, and they also want a driveway location that's closer to the front door. So they don't have sufficient frontage, so they're requesting the CUP for the second one. They have room to fit it where the, between the property boundary. They had a surveyor go out there. I went out to the site. They have sufficient room for it, and they've spoken with the butters who are directly next to them, and they had no concerns with it. So our recommendation is approval, but to go through the driveway process with engineering to ensure that they're meeting all the construction standards for driveway construction.
So as you're looking at the house, it's on the left side of the house?
Yes.
There's trees up on the left side of that, or bushes. I live up the street.
There's arborvitae.
For the record, I live on that street, but I didn't even, I didn't, so there's arborvitae along the left inside, and there's still enough room for?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be a 10-foot driveway, which is our minimum.
Next to the house, yes.
Right up to the house, yes.
And so the curb will be removed?
Yes.
Okay.
So it concerns, we don't usually do this, I don't think. We don't usually have a second driveway cut in a residential house, and the driveway that's there is a double-wide driveway. So it's a double-wide driveway in front of a double-wide garage.
Yes.
There's space on the right side where I've seen them park the little RV.
Yep.
And a canoe. No space on the left side of the garage, space on the other side of the garage. I'm surprised there's no issues with cutting a second curb on our residential street, so.
It's allowed by a conditional use permit, so that's a purview of the board to determine if it's...
Have we done this? You know, Matt, yes.
So I, the last one I remember like this was on Airport Road, I believe, and I think we denied that.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I could be wrong about the street, but I do know the last time a second driveway came up, we did not approve it.
Okay, Suzanne?
So I guess, I think what, this is not a driveway per se, it's like a parking space.
Essentially.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem like they have tons of room on the other side where the garage is to expand that and have one drive and park their RV there. Doesn't it look like there's like an extra?
I think the, in the notes, it was due to the fact that they are trying to get closer to their entrance door, which is on the left side of the house, instead of having to walk across.
Well, they're gonna have their RV there, so, I mean, they're not gonna be able to park there.
Oh, they're, they're planning on parking their family car on the left side near their entrance to their door, and the RV, I guess, is on the right side. Is that correct? Because they want to have easier access to their front door, which is on the left side of the house, but right now their driveway's on the right side of the house.
Yeah, there's a drive, there's an entrance in the back of the house as well, and that's the primary. Again, I live on the street, so I know the, I know the house well, but there's an entrance on the back of the house that I think is the primary entrance. I wish the applicant was here, but...
No.
What's that?
You could either postpone it to next month and make sure that she's here.
Yeah, I'd like to get some, I'd like to get some feedback from the applicant, because I'm inclined not to, not to do that, but that's my vote. Any, any thoughts on this? I'd like to push it off to next month. I'd like the applicant to come in.
I'd agree.
Okay, I'm gonna make that motion that, that this be pushed to next month. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Geez, not making very good progress, sorry Heather. All right, let's move on to 7B on our agenda. TF Moran on behalf of Unitil requests two conditional use permits, CUPs, for disturbance of wetland buffers and disturbance in the shoreline protection district to allow improvements in the utility right-of-way along 36 and 38 lines which cross the institutional IS, industrial IN, and open space residential RO districts. Mr. Golan, welcome back to the table.
Yo.
Yes.
So Steph, I suggest that we determine it complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing.
Great. I didn't say that on my little thing here, did it? Or did it over here? Oh, I looked at the wrong one, determination of completeness. All right, so staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and recommends opening the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion to determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Could we get a quick staff update on this one?
All right, this is just another many utility CUPs that we've seen. They're replacing poles. These are located adjacent to the Merrimack River, so there's impacts to the shoreline protection zone, and there's also impacts to wetland buffers.
Okay, welcome back. If you could state your names for the record?
Certainly, my name is Nick Golan, licensed engineer in principle with TF Moran.
Nate Sherwood, licensed engineer in principle with Unitil.
Excellent.
So relative to what you have before you, I think Heather said it pretty, or the opening said it pretty succinctly, existing utility lines of a certain age in which they need to be replaced. I'm not gonna overtalk this one. We're within an existing...
Heard it here, folks.
We're, we're within the existing right-of-way. These are all within areas of prior impact. Happy to answer any questions. Relative to the other permits that are associated with this, there is a shoreline permit by notification, as well as a wetland statutory permit by notification. Both of those are five-day reviews, so we figured we'd go through the city process first, make sure there weren't any comments, questions, or concerns. The other filing that's required is with Natural Heritage Bureau, just making sure there are no rare and endangered species or otherwise. That came back clean as far as the correspondence with those folks, so with your blessing, we'll go ahead and make those submissions.
Great.
Successful this evening.
Well, it is a public hearing, so I'm pretty sure all these folks here probably want to speak on this issue, but we'll look to the public if anybody has any questions or concerns regarding this application. If not, Counsel Pierce?
Thank you. Thank you for that, Nick. The, this is an upgrade to the distribution network for Unitil?
Yeah, it's our subtransmission network, so.
Distribution? Yes, thank you.
But it's just the lines, right?
Yes, correct.
So no additional on-ground other than just what's on the poles?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeff?
I just, I assume this is, that's fishing game that is connecting behind. Do you have to get any permission from them to access through their property, or is the easement?
Existing easement rights extended.
But does it continue all the way through their property, or is it only from there down across the river?
Unitil has easement rights within the totality of the area where they have their pole line and the overhead line.
Okay, any other questions? Nobody from the audience, any questions? Close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the following conditional use permit approvals in the existing utility right-of-ways located, well, for line 36 located between 85 Second Street off Lock Road and line 38 utility right-of-way located between 480 Road and Hayes and Drive, subject to the precedent conditions which are outlined in precedent conditions one and two? Would someone like to make, someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Is that it, Heather, on that? I think that's it. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, once we move on to the next thing.
Sweet, thank you guys. Nope, I asked. Asked twice. All right, moves us on in our agenda to our Wilcox and Barton section of the agenda. Wilcox and Barton on behalf of Friendly Kitchen requests an amendment to a previously approved major site plan and conditional use permit application for a building addition and modification of a number of parking spaces to be constructed at 2 South Commercial Street. Is that right?
There's, yes, that's right.
2 South Commercial Street in Opportunity Corridor, Performance District. This is, has been determined complete.
It has not.
It has not been determined complete, so we have a determination of completeness and not a development of regional impact. Staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to accept that determination of completeness, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The public hearing is open. If we could get a quick staff update on this one?
So yes, they are, they're doing a small addition that didn't technically trigger a minor site plan, but it is an amendment to the last major site plan that they requested, and the addition ends up triggering additional parking requirements. So they did not, they originally, their original CUP exempted them from constructing all of the, all of the parking that was required, and so they just need a modification of that CUP to allow them not to construct the additional spaces that will be required. We had no issues with this application, and we recommend approval.
Excellent. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, I'm Syndetario with Wilcox and Barton.
I'm Valerie Guy with the Friendly Kitchen.
Great. Tell us a little bit about this. I think it's pretty straightforward, but we'll give you the chance to speak.
Sure, of course. The project is to add approximately 775 square feet of office space and storage space for the Friendly Kitchen. As Heather said, there was a previously approved CUP to defer the building of the parking lot and drainage associated with the parking lot, and as we redid the parking calculations, we needed an additional four parking spaces, which kicked us into requesting a amendment for the CUP.
Great. Any questions from the board? Earl?
I have a question on lighting. I wasn't able to see it on the plan, if there was any. Is there any additional overhead lighting for the parking?
We have not added that because we're not actually really looking to add the number of people that are gonna be in the facility. We're not changing capacity in the dining room. It's really to add some office space and some prep space. We've actually added some additional lighting since the building was put up, since it was built. We'll continue with that to try to make sure there's sufficient lighting sensor, you know, motion sensor lighting we've added recently. We're gonna keep up with that to make sure the building's as secure as possible to ensure everybody's safety, so we're willing to do what we can in that aspect.
Just to follow up.
Yep.
So there's no additional lighting planned for this expansion?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I clarify? They're not, they're not constructing any new parking.
Thank you.
It's just a building, yeah. So I just asked her, I said, they don't do parking.
The addition made them like require more, but they're not constructing anymore, which is why they're getting the CUP.
All right, then I misunderstood, thank you.
Put some lighting out on Constitutional Avenue. We don't want to get into that, sorry. Okay, any other questions from the board?
No.
Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay, close the public hearing. So in your packet, 3.1, should I, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, can I do them all in one, or you wanna drag it out?
They should be separate.
You wanna drag it out? Just tell me you wanna drag it out. Okay, 3.1 to grant ADR approval for a 775-square-foot building addition. Someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 3.2 is to grant the amendment to the conditional use permit to allow for the, approval to allow 53 parking spaces not be constructed where construction of 76 are required.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And 3.2, again, 3.3 will make it on the record, is to grant an amendment to the minor site plan for a 775-square-foot addition to the building, subject to all conditions of the original approval, as well as the following precedent conditions one and subsequent conditions one and two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that amendment as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I didn't ask you if there's any discussion, apologies. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moves us to item 7D in our agenda. Wilcox and Barton on behalf of South Congregational Church requests major site point approval for the conversion of an office use to an eight-unit multi-family units on 6 South State Street in the Civic Performance District, CIV. If the applicants are here, come on up. If we could get a staff update on this?
So this is a major site plan, so typically we determine it complete, and then the public hearing happens at the next meeting. They have requested a waiver to allow the public hearing in the DOC to happen at the same meeting. Staff is in support of the waiver. There is no, very little construction proposed on the site, so we, I recommend that you grant the waiver for section 6.013 of the site plan regulations. of the site plan regulations, uh, to allow them to have the public hearing, and then, uh, subsequently make a determination of completeness and not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing.
Alright, so you got the details from Heather. Would, uh, someone like to make a motion to allow for the public hearing and, uh, decisions to be made tonight? Uh, how do you want me to word that? What was that?
I have a question.
I have a question first.
Okay, hold on just. Yeah, go ahead.
We received a letter earlier that sent us. You know, this has been properly noticed and everything else, right? So, that letter, the person who wrote that letter, the butter, has had plenty of time to review this before we take this step.
Correct.
And then cause problems for ourselves later.
It has been noticed, yeah. Tell me what you need to have us do first and foremost?
Grant the waiver to section six point zero one three to allow the public hearing to occur at the same meeting as a determination of completeness.
Okay, you got that. So would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we do have a determination completeness component. Staff has found that the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, now we'll get a staff update on this.
Uh, it's a conversion to eight units, eight residential units from an office use. They received a number of variances regarding parking, I believe, and access, um, on the site, and we had no major issues with the conversion. Well, the, the one issue that did arise pertains to the water. Um, the State, South State Street is under moratorium, and they cannot, they need to, to upgrade their, their water utility service, so they can't go through there. So, uh, we came to an agreement with them, that they could piggyback for, in the short term, off the South Congregational Church line, um, and when the moratorium is up, that they will, they will reroute their line and connect through South State Street. Um, so we have asked them to provide us with easements or other legal documents, documenting, and putting up a bond for that work. Uh, so it's not something that the, the city typically does, but we're in support of it in this case, because of the moratorium and because of the institutional nature and, and the client itself.
Just for the record, the moratorium is digging up the perfectly paved streets right after they've just been paved.
It's a five-year moratorium.
Literally, like, within the last year, so. Uh, so they'll be able to do that after the moratorium is over. Uh, okay, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Greg Lassard, Director of Housing Initiatives for Concord Coalition and Homelessness.
Aaron Lambert with Wilcox &amp; Barton.
Alright, uh, why don't you tell us a little bit about your project?
Uh, thank you. The, uh, South Congregational Church approached the Concord Coalition to end homelessness to see if we had an interest in purchasing the property, so that it would serve a higher purpose. Uh, they wanted the, uh, property to, um, serve, um, individuals experiencing homelessness for a, a long period of time. Um, we, uh, have secured an option agreement on the property. In order to secure that option agreement, the full congregation needed to vote, um, on selling the property. Um, it's my understanding that only one individual was opposed, otherwise it was the unanimous decision by the congregation to, um, sell the property to the coalition. Uh, the, the property is, uh, uh, an, an old home, eighteen ninety-six, with an attached carriage house. The front of it is commercial, and the carriage house has two residential, uh, units in it. Um, it actually lays out exceptionally well for, um, our purposes. Uh, what we're trying to do is convert it to eight one-bedroom apartments. These are, um, complete apartments, uh, and, um, they will, uh, this, they will, they will be permanent supportive housing, so the individuals, uh, living there, uh, it is not transitional. Uh, it will be, they, if, uh, they can live there as long as they want. We will be applying for project-based vouchers, and project-based vouchers, uh, allow those individuals to, you know, that the, the units themselves will permanently have a rent associated with it. So Concord will have eight permanent, um, supportive housing units for individuals experiencing homelessness. Uh, the, uh, funding sources, they put in the deed, um, that it must serve that purpose for thirty years. The congregation has asked that it be forty years, so, um, uh, that will be a long-term solution for at least eight individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. The, um, uh, the layout of the, um, uh, buildings themselves, uh, work exceptionally well. We, we have a floor plan, and, uh, it is a, the interior is beautiful, has wonderful woodwork, uh, wood floors, um, and so the way it, it lays out, uh, we, uh, can, uh, we'll be doing very little work, uh, in, in, on the interior. Um, we're just going between walls to open them up to allow access, and maybe some blocked off. Um, but, uh, structurally, we have to do very little to the interior. Of course, we have to add eight kitchens, eight baths, but, um, beyond that, it lays out, uh, really exceptionally well. Um, we do not, uh, there's, there's, um, the, the project is completely within the footprint of, uh, the building. Uh, we are doing nothing to the exterior of the building, so it's all just renovations within the, uh, interior of the building. Concord Housing and Redevelopment is, uh, the property manager for our properties, um, so, um, they will be managing it once, uh, it is occupied. Uh, and the Concord Coalition, uh, supplies the, uh, provides the, uh, supportive services. So we have supportive service plans for these individuals before, um, uh, they move in. We work with them to, um, uh, just be sure that they're ready to be good neighbors, and then, once they are, um, living there, uh, the supportive services continue. Um, and, uh, we, we will be there on-site, working with the individuals to make sure that they can, um, make the transition from homelessness successfully into a long-term permanent housing situation.
Perfect, thank you, Greg. Um, so you may be wondering if there's not a lot of site work, why we're here. Um, the change in use from commercial to multifamily, um, triggers a major site plan. So as Greg mentioned, there is, um, very little exterior work being done. They're gonna repave and restrike the parking lot. Um, the parking lot includes ten parking spaces, one of which is an ADA space. We didn't get any zoning relief, but what we were able to do, we, we got a determination from the code enforcement officer, um, that because this is an approved use in the zone, um, and we are not making it more non-conforming, that the non-conformities are allowed to, to stay. So we don't actually have any variances, but we are, uh, we do have a letter from the, the code enforcement officer, from, um, Tracy Hutton, indicating that we are compliant. So we are going to, um, the utilities are, are almost there. Uh, the, the domestic water and the sewer are adequate for our use. However, we are going to sprinkler the system, and there is not an adequately-sized, um, water line going to the building today. Um, and as we talked about with the moratorium, um, we've been working closely with the city to come up with a creative solution, um, in order to get the housing, um, on the market now and not have to wait, um, for five years. So, um, through spirit of cooperation with the South Congregational Church, the proposal that we have, and we're very thankful for the city for helping us think outside of the box for how to do this, um, uh, to orient you, uh, our property fronts on South State Street, which is on the right-hand side. Um, Pleasant Street is up to the north, um, and Wall Street to the, to the south. Um, and so you can see that we have a domestic service, but we would have to cross and, and cut into the new road in order to put in an upgrade. However, the church already has a six-inch, uh, water line for their fire service coming off of Pleasant Street. Um, and so Greg has been working, um, and this is not yet approved, but is a proposal that will be going through the church board, um, to basically tee off of their line and extend a line underneath their parking lot and connect to the backside of our building at, um, Six South State Street. Um, the intention would be that in the future, when we're able to connect into the street, um, we will either, um, just make this short connection to Pleasant Street, because this line will already have been installed, um, or if for some reason, um, the city isn't amenable, we'll go into South State Street. But this is the initial plan, is that we would be able to maintain this. We would then terminate it here, so we're no longer piggybacking off of the church's fire service and create our own dedicated service to Pleasant Street. That is the only proposed site work as part of our project. Um, as such, we do have three waiver requests in front of you, um, purely because a major site plan requires things like a drainage study, landscape and lighting plans, as well as architectural elevations. Um, because nothing has, is changing on the outside of the building. We're not preparing architectural elevations and request a waiver from that requirement. As Greg mentioned, floor plans, however, have been provided. We don't feel there's a need to provide a drainage study, because, um, the stormwater will be exactly as it is today. There's no changes, um, and we're not adding any additional lighting or landscaping. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So, uh, Mr. Lassard, you mentioned these were complete apartments. I, I take it that a complete apartment is in, in bathroom in the room and, uh, and a, a kitchen?
Kitchen, bathroom, uh, there'll be a, a shared laundry, uh, facility, but other than that, everything is, uh, complete, complete apartments.
Okay. Um, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedrooms?
All one-bedrooms.
All one-bedrooms. Separate bedroom or studio?
Separate bedroom.
Separate bedroom. Uh, I saw some parking, uh, I saw a plan, on the plan set, there was some parking with the different notes, staff parking, things like that. Those are all coming out, and there's, there's no staff parking for-
Correct.
-your staff or anybody else, it'd just be, it'd just be resident parking?
Correct, and, and the, most of our clients do not own vehicles.
Yeah.
The property that we, um, own on, uh, Green Street has, uh, four clients. Uh, there is not a single car there.
Okay. Uh, exterior space, you know, that picnic, picnic area, outside spaces, anything there now?
There's a, if you look on the plan, there's a couple of covered porches.
Yeah.
Um, the, the one on the front here is, then, is lovely and large.
I mean, it's a city lot, so there's not a lot of grass and trees and swingset areas, but-
But there's a nice-
Just have to ask.
We're keeping, there's a nice hedgerow here along the, um, the front of the parking spaces, and then there's some mature trees and all of that over me.
Okay. Aaron, you mentioned you went for some zoning relief. What were you looking for, for zoning relief?
We actually didn't need zoning relief. We made sure that because it is, um, because the multifamily use is allowed in the zone, the non-conformity-
You didn't get any zoning relief, 'cause you didn't ask for any zoning relief.
But we did get a determination letter to confirm that, and it was submitted with the application.
Okay. Um, and you mentioned fire service, that's the reason you're bumping over. Is this line, the water line, only gonna be for fire service? Is it gonna be for residential water?
No, we are gonna, we're planning to reuse the existing water service that comes off of South Main Street, or excuse me, South State Street, um, because that's already connected to the internal plumbing.
Yeah.
Um, if we find out for some reason that that line is not adequate, um, either in size or condition, we will tee off of the new fire service, because again, we wouldn't wanna go into the road to have to do those improvements. But the plan is to reuse the existing.
Gotcha, okay. David?
Uh, just a quick question. We, we all received a letter today from an, a butter on Wall Street. I think everybody, we all got that.
Yeah.
Did you get a copy of that letter?
I did not.
Okay. Uh, there were concerns based on, basically, security. And you alluded a little bit to the fact that there's some screening process, um, for the eight inhabitants of this building. Can you just touch on that a little bit?
Um, hey, uh, before, before we do that, I think the, the person who wrote the letter, I think, is probably here. Maybe we could, uh, have him speak to the questions, uh, once we open the public hearing for public testimony, and then we'll ask them to come back up and address that. If that's okay? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, alright. Jeff?
So I have two. What is happening with the existing garage? Are you utilizing any of the spaces? 'Cause the way this parking's laid out, that ADA would block access.
One of, one of the, um, the ADA blocks, two of them, you're correct. So one additional, um, parking, uh, one unit, uh, one day in that, uh, parking can still be used.
Okay, 'cause today, the signs on the outside, and it appears that they park on the outside. So the garage will be cleaned and somehow sectioned off, so they can park inside?
One, again, I don't know that we'll ever need, um, you know, the parking spaces, but yes, the, the garage will be cleaned out, and one space will be available if it, if it is ever needed. I, I, I think it'd probably be more, uh, used for other purposes, but, you know, in the event that we need them all, actually, for parking.
And the other one I have-
Oh, thank you.
Um, is, I took a walk out there, and if you're gonna be paving the parking lot, I'd like to see you take another look at, from the parking lot to where the access to the ADA ramp. It's a little uneven, and you, I think you might have a lip that might not meet, so if you could just take a look at that. I don't think it'll take, regrade in the whole walkway, but just, at least definitely to make sure that the access meets standard.
Absolutely, thank you.
Matt?
See two offices proposed here? Just curious what those are for.
Two offices?
Says proposed office, and I think maybe the second floor. Maybe office first or second floor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I know what you're talking about. Um, that's for our caseworkers to have a, a place when they, when they go there to meet, uh, with our, with our clients, rather than, um, having to go into their units. They can meet with them, um, in, in that space.
Thanks.
Did Matt? You'll sit down?
Yep.
Amanda?
There's no, um, office hours of the, um, employee of, of the coalition. It's just when they have scheduled visits with them. So it's not like someone is there, um, even eight hours a day or anything like that. It's just-
At, at the present time, uh, correct, um, you know, that, that could change, um, and, and we may, um, have somebody there just more, more consistently, but, uh, not, uh, no, it's not planned at this time to have somebody there, you know, uh, eight hours a day.
Or office hours, or-
No, yeah, yeah, it's not planned at this time.
Jeff?
So, looking at this floor plan, those two offices do not have access to a bathroom when those people are there?
Um-
Without then entering a unit, which is the whole point of having the offices.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's for, it, our plans are, um, uh, that they're, they're there meeting clients, not there for eight hours. That is a preliminary plan, it's not a final plan. The, it, the, the plans have a, you know, quite a ways to go to, um, actually, you know, finalize, and that was a concept to get bids and, uh, or initial pricing, uh, um, on it, but, um, those are not final plans. Good point, though.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter if you're there for eight hours or an hour.
Yeah.
You need the restroom, you need the restroom.
Good point.
I mean, can probably simply just
Yeah, add another one.
A, a, you know, a, a toilet, that's all you really need, doesn't have to go crazy, but.
Yeah, it, there's plenty of space in that, uh, it, it's total of, uh, sixty-five hundred square feet, so some of the units are very large, so there's certainly the opportunity to add an additional bathroom, so, um, I, I like the idea as well. I mean, uh, it, and, and to your point, in, in, in the event that we did have somebody there on a more permanent, uh, you know, uh, daily basis working, then, then that would allow that to happen more readily.
Might as well do it now, maybe later, we all know.
Yeah.
Questions from board? Have you guys step back?
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, certainly.
Chairman. So were you able to confirm the size of that, um, existing service on the private side?
Water or sewer?
I'm sorry, water.
Water's a one-inch service.
Okay, so goes from one, one in the street and then it's one also in the, uh, on the private property area.
From what we've got it from looking at records, yeah.
Okay.
And we're gonna have the sewer line camera to ensure that that's got good quality and confirm it's a six-inch.
Yep, perfect, and, um, uh, one thing I didn't comment on that, um, I think I'd like to just work with you on is the, um, just the access width. Um, potentially widening so that you can have like some, a, a couple of radii
Oh, sure.
For that sort of narrow driveway, just to make it a little bit easier to turn in
Sure.
And out. The access width is about fifteen and change?
Sixteen. Yeah, yeah, it's just over, yeah, because this aisle is going to be sixteen-three, so it's, yeah, it's about sixteen feet.
Yeah, okay.
That's at the roadway.
Questions?
Sorry?
That's at the street, not at the back sidewalk.
At the back sidewalk, it's about fifteen and a half, I believe, right?
Yeah, I've got a little less than that, but yeah, give or take fifteen-ish.
It's sixteen-three to here, so it's a little bit shy.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, sort of a retaining wall there and we can take a look at if that's still needed, um, and work on softening that to make it
No, I was just, uh, follow up to Jose, the only thing I, question is, can they install those curves without digging in the street after we just said there's a moratorium?
Uh, yeah, right, so that would have to obviously be, um,
I, I just want to clarify, because I, it, I'm sure that's gonna be a question they're gonna come back with, what's the, you know?
I think the pinch point right now is really this right here at the sidewalk and we could do that without getting into the street, but yes, if we need to talk about anything out in the street, that may have to wait until
Yeah, and I, I, I think you have comfortable, uh, you know, enough room at that pinch point, um, the minimum is like twelve feet or something like that for a driveway this type and, um, but it, it's just, you know, it kinda wants to widen up as you get towards the street with like a, a five-foot minimum radius, something like that, ideally. And, uh, yeah, that could of course be done down the road and, um, I guess the, the last thing is that I'm not sure, I'm not sure yet how a guarantee works, financial guarantee for like five years, but we'll work, work with you on the details of that for the, um, abandonment of the, uh, domestic water service, sorry.
Yeah.
If it needs to happen
And connecting, making Yeah.
Uh, at some point if, if it's deemed, um, inadequate, the one-inch service.
Okay, no, we appreciate that, we appreciate the city's willingness to work with us, we'll put some kind of financial guarantee in place to make sure that anything that needs to be deferred for five years, you know, gets put in place when it can and we respect not wanting to disturb the pavement, which was put in about two months ago.
Yeah, just before the winter.
Yes, the, uh, first time I, uh, was visiting the site, the, um, the, they were paving right in front.
That's true. Any other questions from board? I have to apologize, Jose, for missing you. Alright, we'll have you guys step back now and invite anybody up, somebody, anybody up there? Yeah, pull it, no, pull it forward and you'll be okay, just pull it a little bit forward and they'll adjust it in the back, there you go. Now you're gonna hear you breathing, but, and typing. Yeah, public hearing is open, so when we determine it complete and open.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure before we moved.
If you could state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Mike Vermette, I submitted the, um, letter along with, um, Norm, Norman, uh, Norman Lee, uh, to you today. I think the letter's pretty self-explanatory, uh, so I, I'm happy to answer any questions, to, um, expound upon that. After hearing, um, the testimony that I just heard, I have some additional, um, comments that I'd like to make, but, um, full disclosure, I'm new to all this, I have no experience, um, coming up before you. I was notified, I believe, under the proper, uh, way of a certified letter last week about this meeting. Then I started to inquire and with such short notice and finding that, um, the, um, the applicant is looking to fast-track this, is somewhat disappointing to me because I wasn't able to mobilize, um, perhaps, you know, everything to, to present my objection in a, in a, in a, in a, um, a more organized way, so I've been working diligently over the last couple of days seeking counsel as well as, um, educating the abutters. Also quite disappointed that, um, I wasn't approached about the fact that this was all in the planning stages, so there could have been some perhaps collaboration. So this is all happening fast and furious and, uh, it's quite unsettling to me, as I described in the letter, um, not that I have any problems with the mission of South Congregational Church, nor do I have any problems with the mission of the Concord Coalition to, to end homelessness. It's just, um, you know, as I, as I mentioned in the letter, there's significant safety concerns as well as a history of, of problems with, um, the, the, um, the homeless population that, uh, that was gathering in that area. So, um, so that said, I'll, I'll stop rambling.
No, if you, actually, if you could, uh, since the applicant hasn't heard the, the letter, they, we got the letter in our packets, but the applicant didn't get it, uh, nor did any of the people in the audience see it, if you can just kind of summarize your, your issues that you outlined in the letter for the public, then we'll have a, be a better jumping off point to, to have them come back up and address it.
Okay, thank you for those instructions
Yeah.
Because I want to be efficient with everybody's time, I know you have a full agenda.
That's, I appreciate that.
I, I did my best to summarize it in, um, six bullet points, the first being that in the past, the South Congregational Church leased space in the proposed location to the Concord Coalition as a resource center. At that time, there were many instances of disruptive and dangerous behavior by the clientele, such as yelling, use of profane, profane, um, profanities and fighting. Number two, I have concerns for the safety, um, of, um, of my orthodontic patients. Our orthodontic office has been in that location since nineteen-seventy-seven, my predecessor started the practice and I joined him in nineteen-ninety-four. We have, um, no intentions of, uh, leaving that location, in fact, my daughter is in dental school now with the plans of, of joining me. We've also, um, done our best to be a good steward, uh, towards the city in, um, keeping the property not only up to date, but in best use. For example, I just recently renovated, um, some space on the second floor to create a living quarters, um, to which my family, uh, current, currently uses. So we're invested for the long term. Getting back to the safety of our patients, um, I have many school-aged children, some of whom attend their appointments alone because of the convenience of the location, they travel by bike or on foot from nearby residences as well as schools. I also have many adult, um, patients who perhaps for whatever reason, um, you know, are anxious about treatment and perhaps would feel threatened, uh, by a neighbor whose demeanor appears, uh, unstable as has happened in the past. I have spoken, um, I solicited the dialogue, I wasn't approached at all, um, for, you know, any sort of discussion, but, um, I, I, I approached, um, both the South Congregational Church and then got a call, uh, later that day from, um, Mr. Lussard. And, uh, he explained to me in summary of, of, of what he just, um, um, mentioned to you all. And, uh, I do think that my line item number four there, um, I, I would like to correct, I, I used the term, um, it was unsettling to hear about evictions at other, um, housing units in Concord that, um, have served the same purpose as this proposed applicant has now. I just wrote transitional housing and I was corrected by just learning for the first time that this isn't officially transitional, even though you're transitioning the homeless population into, into a residence. So excuse me if I use the wrong term, uh, in line item, uh, four. But, um, but essentially, the reasons for and the process of units that require eviction, um, could be jet detrimental to abutters with regards to the neighborhood, especially for my professional business, for my living quarters, as well as other nearby, um, housing units. Item number five, I understand that the South Congregational Church privately solicited the Coalition as a buyer in order to further its charitable mission and take advantage of the high value of the real estate market. I trust, though, that perhaps there are safer alternatives consistent with the church's mission, such as, just providing examples, a childcare center. We all are acutely, I think, aware of the, um, workforce crisis and providing a valuable support to families and local businesses would be, I think, a great use of that space. Or perhaps, as another example, um, an immigrant supporter resource center, given the, um, refugee population and the demographic, uh, diversity in the Concord area. You all are way more aware of than, than, than I, but I think, uh, it's been consistent that there's been multiple recent projects that are supportive of redevelopment of housing, along with mixed units in downtown Concord. When I proposed, um, renovating for the living unit above mine, um, you know, uh, Mayor Boulay came up to me and said, this is exactly what the city's looking for, mixed use. And you're taking a property that was mixed use and now you're converting it to single use, I'm not so sure that's consistent with best, best use. And, um, item six is, uh, the objection has the support of other abutters, um, and I'm the one that's educated them on the fact that this was even happening and was able to get, um, um, KJD Real Estate LLC to sign off on this. And my understanding is, having talked to, um, 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 not a representative at Elm Grove, but someone who is, uh, works very closely with Elm Grove, that, um, that they're, um, that they're not, uh, necessarily, and I can't speak to them, in support of this, but that, uh, given such short notice, no one was able, I don't think anybody from Elm Grove is here, uh, couldn't, could, uh, could make this. So that's the summary of, of my letter and I'm happy to go into a few other points, uh, from hearing the presentation of the applicant.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions of, uh, Dr. Vermette? From the board?
Just a quick question. Doctor, if I may, were you aware and had a time of this property being for sale in any way, shape or form?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
In fact, um, I tried to maintain the dialogue and for the most part, we've been good neighbors with South Congregational Church. In particular, uh, I've inquired about parking opportunities, this and that, and my most recent inquiry was a few months ago and I think because of, of, uh, a recent retirement by Peter Imzy, he, he didn't call me back and I just actually called him again and then, eh, once I got the letter and, and, and that kinda got the ball rolling here, but no, uh, I was not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Um, I have a few other things that I was gonna supplement from that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is that appropriate to do?
Yeah.
So they mentioned, like I said, strike the word transitional from item number four, um, long-term housing of the homeless is now my understanding of what this is gonna be. Again, a purposeful, mission-driven, um, just, I don't think consistent with, um, supporting the abutters, uh, especially if, um, you know, you've got eight units. I mean, this population, uh, needs shelter. Uh, I, 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 I think that, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a noble attempt, but just in the, you know, not in that location. They mentioned that the property manager is gonna be the Concord Housing Authority, I made an inquiry on that and again, the Concord Housing Authority representatives I don't think are here, despite my attempt to get them, again, uh, um, you know, away because of the holiday. But I did speak to one of the Concord Housing Authority commissioners, if that's what they're called, uh, excuse my, my, my term. And he is, he said that he was unaware that they, um, were property managers, other than that they were landlords to, um, the Coalition tenants, but did not manage the properties. So I'd, I'd like clarification on, on that. I already mentioned about the change of use, uh, I don't think is, is consistent with best use. I already mentioned the public hearing has happened way too fast, uh, the front page of the Concord Monitor just, just mentioned something about it today, so I don't think, you know, doing this so quickly as opposed to what the normal deliberate protocol is, is appropriate. Landscape plan, that was somewhat dismissed. Having worked and lived in that neighborhood, there are, um, people that gather outside of their apartments and they sit on the curb, they smoke, and to be honest with you, um, it feels unsafe at times. So a gathering place outside as part of this project, if, if it happens to move forward, I think is critical to, um, the appropriateness, uh, and the safety of, of, um, pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Mr. Vermette? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Just, just a clarification, I put my name here, do I put my address or the address in question on the?
Your address.
My, my address here.
Anybody else supposed to speak to this, uh, application? Any other? Folks, no? The applicant can come back up? Okay, well, you heard as well as I did, um, on, um, I won't try to summarize, but I did have a couple of questions, um, if you could address the resource center, um, uh, model and, and the, the way people are gonna be coming and going through a resource center versus permanent long-term housing. I mean, my, and my understanding is that, that this is not something that people are gonna be turning over unless there's the, the ability for them to move up and go to a different apartment, this is not just temporary housing, this is, they might live there for ten years, uh, just like anybody else would in a, a normal downtown apartment, right?
That, that is correct.
Yeah, knock on wood, that's the intent, right?
That's correct, um, so our resource, uh, center is located at, uh, uh, two thirty-eight, uh, uh, North Main Street and, um, it's, it's behind the building and, and, uh, that's where, um, our clients come for the day and, uh, they can, uh, take a shower and, uh, uh, meet with caseworkers and doctors and barbers and that, they can use it for their mailing address, uh, get a hot cup of coffee, et cetera. So at one point prior to, to moving to two thirty-eight, uh, um, North Main Street, um, um, this was the location, so much different, you know, that, that was trying to serve a much different purpose, this is going to be strictly housing. And I would invite anybody to drive by our Green Street property, um, at, at any time and, um, I, I, I drive by there all the time, ten Green Street, and I never see anybody outside. Um, not that somebody can't be outside, you know, they're fully, you know, it's their right to sit outside, um, but, uh, I never see anybody outside. So just by, you know, them living there doesn't mean that they'll be necessarily hanging out outside, we have a resource center, uh, uh, where, where our, where our clients go. And, and your question was about tenant selection, um, I
Just briefly, how
So they, um, individuals, uh, um, that, uh, you know, they, uh, we, we screen them and we work with our clients for, uh, a, a long period of time to, um, come up with a supportive service plan, they have to be engaged in the supportive service plan, uh, then, um, Concord Housing screens them, uh, as well, does a background check. And, you know, the, uh, Dr. Vermette's, uh, comment was, um, we've in the past had to, um, evict some of our clients, uh, they sign a lease and they must, uh, you know, abide by the, uh, the terms of the lease as anybody that lives in an apartment does. So I think anyone that is a landlord, um, has had evictions where things just have not worked out and there can be just a number of, uh, a number of reasons why, uh, you know, somebody's not honoring the terms of the lease that it, uh, uh, they're, they're asked to move on. But, um, you know, it, it is, uh, you know, we, they, the, the Coalition doesn't want any, uh, issues any more than, uh, the neighbors do, so if somebody simply is not being a good tenant, unfortunately, it, it took an awful lot for them to get there, um, and it, it's very disappointing when it, if it doesn't work out for them. But nationally, eighty-five percent of individuals that receive supportive services and move into permanent housing, um, are successful. So there will be some that are not successful, but
Sorry, Greg, could you say that again?
Eighty-five percent of individuals that, um, exit homelessness and when you provide supportive services, they are successful, they stay stably housed. Uh, so that's the national, uh, average, um, and, and, uh, you know, we hope as we continue to house more individuals that that, that is our, um, uh, outcome as well.
And so again, this isn't a, this isn't a, a short-term stay, this isn't a winter shelter, this isn't a, a day center where people are gonna be, be coming in. Dr. Vermette's concern regarding safety, um, again, if there's people out and about sitting and loitering, safety's a concern, but you, you said you don't see that on the Green Street property?
We don't, and, and if it is an issue and, and, uh, you know, the neighbors have a concern, if we see it or Concord Housing sees it, uh, then, uh, we will, uh, address it.
Okay, so Concord Housing, again, you're way in the beginning of this, I understand the planning process and, uh, the movement through the process, so if someone at Concord Housing doesn't know that, that this is coming on board, it's not, it's not news, it's not news or it's not anything that you didn't expect?
Yeah, um, I, I don't, I don't know who the, uh, doctor spoke with, but, uh, Concord Housing is our property manager on, um, um, West Street and Green Street, um, uh, we, uh, they will be on our Pleasant Street property and here. So, um, they actually, and for the, uh, funding applications, um, they have to put down the services and the costs and everything that they will provide, so, uh, the, um, uh, director of, uh, Concord Housing, uh, we've been meeting with her many, many times and she's provided, uh, you know, considerable, uh, uh, numbers and expense, uh, for our, our, you know, cash flow analysis, so, um, they're, they're on board with us, they're, 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 they're definitely aware of it.
So I got a question for you. So, I, I'm concerned about the gathering space as well, if you've got those apartments and it's a hot evening and people wanna get outside or whatever, looking at the plan here, would there be the ability to move the ADA accessible spot to the side of the lot that say over on the, the Vermette side of the, of the, of the lot, I think that's on the south side of the lot? So that ADA accessible spot would park right in front of that garage, uh, door opening and then kind of make that existing ADA spot into a, an unpaved, uh, maybe gravel with a couple of picnic tables or a, a gas grill. I'm just, again, I have no idea what the logistics are of that, but I, I, I'd like to see someplace for people to gather other than on the porch.
Sure, yeah, um, I have some concerns about that because we have the minimum aisle that'll be needed for each of these cars to back out, so it's a, it's definitely a creative solution and that we're happy to look at it. The reason we didn't submit a landscape plan wasn't because we were being dismissive, it's just already pretty well landscaped, um, but that doesn't mean there isn't a place, say in this location, you know, in the, what's lawn area between the parking and the porch where we couldn't create a, a patio space. It's a large open porch, um, I wish I had a picture of it for you, but, um, it's quite expansive, it's, it's a, it's a big porch, it, it's fitting of the style of this house, so, um, we certainly can formalize those and look into that.
And again, just concerns, just, you know, that outside gathering is definitely gonna, gonna take place, it's our hands.
I'll save it for discussion.
The one thing I just wanted to add to and I apologize, Jeff, I didn't mean to cut you off, um, I just wanted to clarify that multifamily use, multi-family housing is an approved use in the zone, so we're not asking for any relief on that, it is an approved use
Right.
In the civic performance district.
So, go ahead Heather.
I just wanted to let Erin know that if you go back to the agenda under the supplemental, are the photos that you submitted as part of your application, one of them has an angled view of the porch.
Perfect, I'll do that, well, just
So, I, I understand the doctor's concerns and looking at the site both from your side and from their parking lot, there is a direct, albeit a small little wall between their parking and your area, which is the front. parking and your area, which is the front of the build, the front entrance, right? Is it possible to consider putting a screening fence from the corner of the garage, maybe run it down by just about to where the AC units are to provide a little bit more buffer and maybe prevent people from cutting through his parking lot, potentially, you know, impacting the concerned patients? It also provides, I think, a little bit more buffer to the seating area and whatnot from that separate parking lot. I don't know if you can see it from this one, but certainly on the...
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I don't know if the butler would want that either.
It may not, but he's here tonight, so certainly could speak to that. I'm just wondering if that's one possibility, to provide a little bit more screening between the two lots, because it is wide open from the parking area. And since that parking area is on the back of the doctor's office, and that's how people gain access to the office, just a consideration that maybe could be discussed between the butlers and see if that's, would help.
Okay. Any other questions on the board?
And I'd like to just address the, that we haven't reached out to the neighbors yet. We only signed the option agreement last week. The two lawyers were just going back and forth for probably a month. And so once we had the option agreement, then we knew that, you know, we had site control, and we felt that that was really the first time to really reach out, once we knew we actually had an agreement. And we are planning on having a neighborhood meeting the second week in January. So we will send little leaflets out to the neighborhood and ask them to just come with their concerns and questions at that time. We just thought it was premature to bring this to the neighborhood without even knowing that they were going to sell us the property.
So to that point, you can understand the concern by Dr. Vermette that this sort of was sprung on him, you know, and the neighbors, because I think we have to balance the need for housing like this with the concerns of the neighborhood. And it seems when we, for Dr. Vermette's words, fast-track something like this, it raises a lot of questions about the process, especially when the city's involved. So I just think a comment that for future situations like this, probably notifying earlier is better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Staff have any issues?
No, I would just note that everyone was noticed in accordance with the statute for the application.
Yeah, there was no fast-tracking on the notice, or, I mean, again, it is what it is.
Except we agreed to hear it tonight.
To hear it tonight, yes, as opposed to a month.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
The current use of this space now, before you converted, is what?
Most of the house, well, the house is commercial. They only have one tenant, and one of the reasons they were considering selling it at this time is they were having difficulty renting the space out. The carriage house has two tenants in it. It's two residential sites, so very small part of the main house is commercial right now.
And it's not you that is leasing it?
Lease, short-term leases for all three tenants.
Say that again? So it's the Coalition who's leasing it?
No, we are not. Three unrelated entities.
I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. We closed the public hearing. And again, with a note regarding fencing or screening, if you feel free to bring that forward. Matt?
So now that it's discussion, you know, this is an interesting application. I think that some of the questions that have been raised about the tenants are unfair. This was a, to Erin's point, if this was just being converted into an apartment building, we probably would not have the same questions or the same concerns about the tenants. So I think it's a bit prejudicial to factor that type of thinking into our decision-making.
Yep, duly noted. Any other questions on the board? Any other comments from staff?
I have one.
Yes, Amanda?
One comment, because it's just to add to Matt's, is that the former use of that property by the Coalition was for a completely different service.
Absolutely, and I hope that was clear.
And that service is not the same of what they're using it and/or purchasing it for today.
It's going to be rentals.
So it would be different, different flow of people.
Yep, hopefully not a flow.
Yeah.
Hopefully an incoming and long-term. Yes, Council Pierce?
Generally speaking, I'm usually not in favor of having public hearings on the same night that we have this discussion. But that said, I agree with the comments that are made, that this is a different use of the building. But if we put this out another month to have a public hearing, given what our process here is the planning board, as long as it meets all the building and zoning and all those other specifications, what goes on inside that building really doesn't have any bearing with this body. Is that correct?
Yeah, per se. It doesn't, and I don't know that it would change.
Right, okay.
Over 30 days later. I don't want to speak for the board, but I, that's my thought.
To the point that even if all of the neighbors came to oppose this because it's a permitted use, it probably still goes forward.
I mean, we've seen it. We saw it with the product, the property on the rail yards where we had person after person after person came in. And you look at what's on our agenda to say, we're not giving, you know, we're not giving waivers, we're not, you know, bending anything. I mean, this is a permitted use.
Oh, we can go back to the poultry processing plant.
The poultry processing plant, another grant. Let's not go to the poultry processing plant. Okay. So in your packets, any other questions or comments? In your packets, you've got 3.1 is to grant ADR approval for the major site plan where no changes to the site or existing structure are proposed. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No other staff comments regarding engineering, as far as you guys are all set with the, with whatever needs to happen, as far as the pieces and parts? Perfect. 3.2 is to grant the following waiver request using criteria RSA 674443EI as guidance, and that's outlined in section 160212B, which is drainage study, 160215, which is landscape plan, and 1603, which is architectural elevations. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And 3.3 is to grant major site plan approval for the conversion of office space to three residential units at 6 South State Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions outlined in your packet, which is precedent conditions 1 through 5, 6, sorry, 1 through 6, and subsequent condition 1. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just as a correction, it's eight units, not three. You stated to correct to three.
Did I say three? I apologize. It says eight right there, so, and it's only what?
For the record.
Eight-eleven. So eight units for the record, 6 South State Street. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we will move on in our agenda to item 7E, Greenberg Pharaoh, on behalf of Milano Real Estate, requests minor site plan and architectural design review approval for construction of a 7,800 square foot building for a new restaurant and associated site work at 311 Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District. The applicant's here. Welcome to the table. If we could get a quick staff update on this project?
Sure. So this is where the Newick's seafood restaurant formerly was located. They'll be demolishing that building and constructing a new building. There's site work related to just fixing up the parking lot and improving the circulation. Staff comments were submitted to the applicant, and they have agreed to the comments. There was no concerns with the comments as presented, including extending the sidewalk to the building itself, and then architectural design review comments regarding the lighting.
They are amiable to the lighting changes?
I believe so.
Okay, well, we'll let them tell us if differently. If not, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
Determine it complete.
I'm out of sorts, because I'm reading it, and I don't go over to my little sheet here, so bear with me. One second, hold tight there. So item 7E, we have a determination completeness component and not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and roundly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Hi, I'm Jillian Kanarski. I'm with Greenberg Pharaoh, where Texas Roadhouse is national architect and engineer.
And Rick Demonte, representing the owner, Milano Real Estate Associates.
Great. Well, tell us a little bit about your project, and why can't you use the existing building?
Yeah. Sure. I just want to note, I think that the address was missaid, spoken before. It's 317 Loudon.
Did I really?
It's okay. It's a long night.
Heather's going to read the rest of them into the record for me. Again, it says 317 Loudon Road, right here.
No more eggnog.
No more eggnog. It's my sweater.
I like your sweater.
Reflecting off the thing here, so...
All righty, so yes, as discussed, there is a building currently there. It's a bit old. I think it was a barbecue restaurant even before Newick's.
It was.
And so our application proposes demolition of the entire building and then rebuilding to a brand-new Texas Roadhouse building, just so that it could be prototypical, and then staff and operations would be able to operate, just like everywhere else. That would have this new layout. This is slightly bigger than what you might see at neighboring locations. This footprint just rolled out a few months ago, actually. So this is just under 8,000 square feet. I did meet with the Architectural Review Board, and we reviewed that. I have samples if anyone would like to see it here. It's about 290 seats, I believe. The site work in and of itself is limited in the sense of we're attempting not to do too much to the parking area. There's just some change in grading. It was mentioned at the last meeting, and I'll mention it here. Those ADA parking spot spaces at the front are not ADA compliant, so we will be making them ADA compliant and maintaining pretty much the entire thing. We're just, I believe, repaving the parking lot in an effort to regrade it so that it does meet ADA, is ADA compliant. But like I said, we're maintaining as much as we can of the existing, not really changing anything stormwater-wise. There is proposed new landscaping, and we have a landscape plan in our package that was submitted here.
Texas State flag. Who's going to mention the Texas State flag?
Thank you. I should have mentioned the Texas State flag.
Can't believe it's not in Architectural Design Review. Didn't even mention the Texas State flag.
There is a US flag and a Texas flag.
I know, but...
If you would like that to be changed and you put it in the record, then a new one could be put up.
No, 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 no. Just mention it. That's all I had to do.
Can I get votes for a New Hampshire flag?
Okay. Questions? Jeff?
Just have one question. I didn't see anywhere in the purported supplemental, you're changing the sides of the building, you said, slightly?
Um, yes, I was trying to...
The reason, where I'm going with this is, you're still meeting parking regulations?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's the shared parking for the entire, the shop, these two parcels are connected. This lot in and of itself, Texas Roadhouse is gaining access to these parking spots over here, which put it over the required amount of parking per square footage and seating.
Thank you.
But it is being reconfigured and restripped. I imagine that you'll have to repave it probably too.
Yeah, there are parts that, of the pavement, that's a bit older, so that's why it's bringing it up to look nicer, and like I said, regrading slightly so that it's per code.
Okay.
But the entrance, my apologies, the entrance is still going to be on the side, which is how the building currently is oriented now.
Yep.
And the dumpster is still at the back.
Any other questions from the board? Suzanne?
Yeah, I think I agree with staff that plans are very difficult to read, because I can't, it's hard for me to see what's a sidewalk and what's gravel or river rock. And I, you noted that that's not an approved ground cover, and they also have a lot of islands that are just, like, not planted. Is their tree count correct? Because I'm looking at a plan here that, it's a overall site plan, and there's a lot of trees to the east where the existing Taco Bell is, but those are not shown in the planting plan?
Yeah, that was a comment that I had.
So I, and the other thing I noticed is, I do not believe that their planting details are the city planting details. Because you don't cut all the burlap off, and I think we require that all the burlap be cut off.
I'm sorry, I'm not a landscape architect, but I can get back with my team.
Well, they should know, because we have details.
No, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
So, but I think that we really try to promote shade trees in areas that are developed like this.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got, like, maybe five crab apples, which I think are in an area that has a large growing area, so that I think a substantial shade tree would be able to live there.
Okay, I'm sorry, are you saying over here on this side?
On, as you're looking at the drawing, it's on the right side.
Yeah, okay, so like I'm pointing to on the screen.
Yeah, like you've got three.
Sorry. I think there are a lot of utilities there, so I can't commit to putting trees there. It would have to be reviewed in terms of the utilities.
So what are all the trees that are located on your site plan? Are those existing?
Sheet one.
Sheet one, sorry.
Nope, that's one.
I'm pretty sure you mean C3.
Well, one of the set we have are 15.
I believe those are existing trees.
So that's, you're showing that as the existing site plan?
This is the, this is the proposed landscape plan.
It's taking some away. No, it doesn't even say. It just says the, it just says an overall site plan.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying on the screen is the landscape plan that was submitted of what's being proposed to be installed.
Okay, but, so you're taking down a bunch of trees and putting back three. Is that correct?
That was a question that I'd asked for clarification in my comments, so they can address it in the response.
So there were a bunch there that you're taking down.
Sure, I'm not...
And you're releasing them with three.
I... Yeah, no, my, if it's a comment provided by Beth, then we will be, we are responding to those comments, so it would be in the response to the comment. I apologize, I don't know this off the top of my head here.
So it would, just looking at it, it looks like there's not a lot of issues with conflicts, so I would look at that. And you, if you can plant a crab apple, you can plant another tree. That is probably more substantial.
Okay, I'll have the landscape architect look at it, yes.
And you pretty much surrounded the whole building with evergreens. And I don't know where the sidewalks are. You can't tell really exactly. You don't have a symbol for the sidewalks. Anyway, and I think staff mentioned that, so I would...
It looks like it's that pebbly-looking one, if I had to guess, but...
Right, but it's not on the...
It's got the little triangles in it.
Yeah, it's not on the key.
That's the hatching for sidewalk.
The things that look like grass are actually a bunch of, it's, I mean, if you're going to do all that river rock, you might as well make the sidewalk wider and then have mulch and just have a better, they need a better landscape plan, I think. And then the details.
He mentioned the trees in the islands. I only see one island that doesn't have a tree in it. Two islands, I guess, three islands.
Did you, in the submitted material, oh, here we go. I was going to say, we have a, there's the overall site plan, because we are showing that there's the existing property, since it is a larger property, and then there's the zoomed-in plan, which I understand there is a lot going on here from the layers of the, what's existing in terms of utilities and whatnot. So this is the, oh, this is rather difficult to move, sorry. So, yeah, the sidewalk is what's around the building as it exists.
Just for clarification, on street view, the island you're thinking of on the western most side?
Yep.
That's not being touched, has a tree in it?
Yep.
And there are trees further between there and the access driveway that comes in off Loudon Road.
Right.
The confusing part is that the existing trees are not shown on the landscape plan.
Right.
So there are trees on those pla, on those islands as required.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Okay. Anything from staff? Any other, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Yeah, I thought they were all here for you guys. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
So in your packets, we have a lot of, a lot of comments and questions. I wanna make sure all those are addressed. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of lighting and landscaping comments, technical review comments, are all those, were all lined up?
Yep. I think a lot of them are just clarification, but in general, they meet the standard. It's just a matter of readability. And there was lighting comments that's addressed under one of your recommendations, so.
Okay.
Just, you're not the only one that got the address wrong, Rich. And 4.2, I put the, the wrong address, so.
Oh, for God's sakes. Fifty-two Louvre Road. At least I'm on the right road.
You changed that report. The wrong one got linked.
All right, yes.
Chairman, is one of the questions, the original name of the restaurant as built up there? Because that's really driving me crazy.
Smokey Bones.
Smokey Bones, thank you very much.
Right?
Yeah.
No, I just, I like the, I like the decor. I'm heartbroken that it's gonna be ripped down, but no, I'm like kidding. Okay, in your packets, any other questions or comments other than what the name of the restaurant is?
Well, just, the recommendations we're talking about, it sounds like they need to submit a new landscape plan, or are they just gonna...
They will be submitting an updated...
Yeah, we'll be submitting revised plans.
Because it's not in here as one of the recommendations right now.
Well, it's part of, the technical review comments is sort of clarification and recommendations for trees.
So a revised, a revised landscape plan that shows new trees and any existing trees that are, that are not gonna be removed. I imagine all those trees are gonna be removed around the building.
I guess I'm just, I'm reading the comments under landscape and lighting. There's nothing that's specifically said. Please provide an updated landscape plan. It just said add this, clarify this, so I just wanna make sure the board's direction is going to be to require them to submit.
I can commit to submitting that, because we would submit all pages back to the staff.
It's implied by requiring changes to it.
Sometimes we have very clear, I just wanna make sure.
David, did I see half a hand up there?
No, you didn't.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So 4.1 is to grant Architectural Design Review approval for the proposed building with the condition that the applicant remove all uplight, sidelight, roof wash luminaries and provides an updated, energy-efficient and targeted flag lighting system for the flags alone, utilizing options that respect the city regulations, protecting the night sky against unnecessary uplighting and glare. Would someone like to make a motion to grant Architectural Design Review approval as outlined?
So moved.
Action has been made. In second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That motion carries. 4.2 is to grant minor site plan approval for the site improvements at 317 Loudon Road subject to the following precedent conditions and subsequent conditions, and that's precedent conditions one and two, subsequent condition one. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second, motion has been made. In second, any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Where do we put in that they need to submit?
And for the record, should we put it in as a condition of approval?
I think we always, it's implied every single time. I don't think we've ever specifically asked anyone to submit a specific plan. When we say revise, change, the implic, you know, how are they gonna do that without submitting a plan? They have to submit a plan.
So under...
It's part of the comment when we say, do this or that.
Yeah. Addressing engineering review comments. Okay. So we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Texas flag.
Texas flag.
At least it won't be uplift.
Only go at night.
See how long that lasts up there.
All right. Brings us on rapidly to seven, excuse me, seven F. Well, Earl wanted to plant cottonwood trees, because those are... Those would grow well in Texas.
Then are you gonna go out and tie yellow ribbons around them?
Yeah. All right. Seven point four, Wilcox and Barton on behalf of Arts Alley LLC, CEO Foxfire. Property management requests a major site plan approval for construction of a five-story mixed-use building consisting of a first-floor restaurant and office and/or event space on the remaining floors at twenty to twenty-five and a half South Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. So the application has previously been determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and we will open the public hearing to this motley-looking crew. We'll get an update from staff first and foremost, if we could.
It's because I got PowerPoint. Sure, so this is the proposal for a five-story building at twenty, twenty and a half South Main Street. There was some robust discussion at ADR last month, so I think they'll be presenting more information on that building tonight. They are requesting a couple of waivers, which staff supports, one for lighting in the alley and one for off-site flows for stormwater runoff. And there's a conditional use permit for, to not build to the front lot line, and that's so that they can have a patio for the restaurant, and staff supports that as well.
Okay, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
I'm Steve Dupree.
Good evening. Erin Lambert with Wilcox and Barton.
Adam Morrow with ProCon.
I'm Jim Loff with ProCon. Jim, just pull that other one around towards you there. Yeah.
You can stay in this damn spot. Just pull the, pull the microphone over to you. There you go.
A straightforward project, all that's taken quite a while. When I was developing the Bank of New Hampshire stage, families in transition had their consignments toward there. They were very concerned that the construction would block the alley. They were already having a difficult time meeting their sales goals, so they asked if I would consider buying the property, which I did. It helped facilitate the redevelopment of the Bank of New Hampshire stage. We've done a lot of studies on reusing the building, turning the building, sliding it down the lot. None of those really worked with what we're hoping to do and make a better utilization of the site. Three years ago, I offered to donate a hundred thousand dollars to help it move. We had Getty's Building Movers do studies for us. Unitil spent a lot of time studying. It's cost about a hundred thousand dollars between the thirty thousand dollar a year mortgage payment, utilities and taxes. But the two best sites where we could readily move the building, which I would like to do, are unavailable. The lot where the League of New Hampshire craftsmen used to be on North Main Street, which is now owned by the State Employees Association, is not available for sale. And on the south end of Main Street, we looked and tried to make a move to, I call it the strings and things corner, the intersection of south end of Store Street and Main Street. We've looked at one or two other possibilities. The challenge with trying to move this house, just so you have a little background, because a lot of people commented about it, is that it's a three-story house with a mansard roof. And in order to move it under utility line, normally when you move one-story house, it's no problem. You can fit under. Two-story house, you have to disconnect the utilities for a pole or two, but to get enough play for a three-story building, sometimes you have to go six, seven, eight poles back, and every time you go back on a pole, it costs money. So we have one more remote option, because I would like to save the building, because it was built in eighteen fifty-four approximately by the gentleman who built the bakery, which is the Bank of New Hampshire stage, so he could keep an eye on his bakery day-to-day. It's, I got some beautiful artifacts in it. If we're not successful in our last sort of chance at trying to move it, then we'll do what we did with the Smile Building and the Love Your Neighbor Building, where we document it and we make part of the lobby's displays recording the history of the building. So that's how we get to this. We looked at a number of studies. Originally, we were gonna do a two-story building, Friendly Toast on the first floor. I have probably the best restored nineteen forties diner in the country, which we're gonna put on the second floor in event space. That'll be run by the Corona Conference Center. We got a lot of feedback that that was somewhat of an underutilization of a downtown site, one of the few on Main Street where you have a knockdown, and asked us to consider maybe going bigger. That plus the combination of construction costs, which when you're doing a two-story building or four hundred and fifty dollars a foot, when you get it up to a five-story building, it's only three hundred dollars a foot. What a deal. We looked hard at doing a number of residential studies. I looked at putting a hotel in there, another downtown hotel. That didn't make sense, given the weak hotel market. We did do a number of studies. Guys, how many? Probably five different studies on apartment scenarios. The challenge with apartments there, the challenge with apartments there is, your rent will have to be so high, because of the construction costs and being downtown, you're probably gonna have to appeal to an upper-income market, and that market does not wanna have to park in a garage and lug their groceries in the snow across the street on a crosswalk. They want parking readily available, so we gave up on that. So the solution right now is to add first-floor Friendly Toast, second, third and fourth floors office space. I'm not sure there's a big need for fifteen thousand square feet of spec office space in Concord right now, but we're hopeful we can find some leasing for it. And then on the fifth floor, put the diner inside the event space. And we had a number of different design schemes. We, you'll hear more about this. We went to design review. The first design we went in was sort of traditional, like we did with the Smile and Bind Rebuilding, and the design review committee said, "You need to be more colorful," which I had to pay. We're good with that. So we put out a bunch of different designs. We got over a thousand people who responded. It's kind of funny. Almost everybody over fifty loved the most traditional design. I heard from two, not one, but two retired Supreme Court justices saying, "You better do traditional." And then almost everybody under forty wanted the most sort of out-there design, so we sort of settled on, on this one, although we're still playing with the shading of that green. But in nutshell, it's a, basically a five-thousand-foot footprint, five stories, Friendly Toast on the first floor setback, so they have some space, some space outdoors up on the fifth floor, and then actually a rooftop deck. That's it.
Some more. Do you want me to hook you the boundaries? Do you want me to out of hook them?
You can go flip them. I mean, this is different. That's from maybe at the crosswalk right after you've been into Franz's Bakery. That's out behind the building. We have a, sort of, if you've been familiar with the site where the Friendly Club was, part of the building, which was the brick gymnasium where they used to roller skate, that's gonna be a courtyard. And we built in room for what I call a Pullman car, not a Pullman car, but a freight box kitchen, so we can do pop-up kitchens or alternately a food truck in there, hardscape area. And then behind that, if you walk down that alley towards the retaining wall, there's the old stable building that went with the house, and that's not part of this project and actually isn't even part of land, but we're gonna have future plans for that and the alley, but that's a separate project. That's the fifth floor. If you look through the roll-up doors or slide doors, you can see the diner in the back. The diner's not like a Lindy's and Keene where you go in and sit down and have ham and eggs. It's more of a showpiece. You might walk through for a cocktail or appetizers. You wouldn't actually sit in there, but it's beautiful.
Anything else on the architecture or maybe the site?
Architecture's good. Let's show them the site.
Yeah, all right.
It's pretty straightforward.
Let me orient you to all the beauty that you just saw. So this is the, the building that Steve was just walking you through. So you have South Main Street on the east. The Bank of New Hampshire stage is the upper part of the page to the north. In the back is that former barn-stable building that Steve was talking about. It technically owns the alley, so this is one lot. The alley and this building that's still in white is one lot, and the lot we're talking about is bounded in red, and the Concord Food Co-op is located to the south.
On the bottom of the screen.
On the bottom of the page, yeah. So, like we said, five-story mixed-use. First floor is the restaurant. The entrance to the restaurant will be here in the upper right-hand corner, and then this would be an outside patio space for outside dining. And then the office entrance to get to floors two through five will be in the lower right corner here. And then in the back, there's a, there's a beautiful sort of activated, engaging outdoor space that we're planning. So it's not a huge space, but it will be fun. So there'll be pavers back there, some plantings around the perimeter. This is a proposed, you know, container kitchen or some sort of food truck that could be back there. We're planning for that with, with water and natural gas utilities. Access will be either on the sidewalk on the north side of the building, or it sort of bleeds into, flows into the alley. That's the reason for one of the two waivers that we've requested. We don't wanna have to restrict lighting going down to zero or point two at the property line. It makes sense for it to all light up that area. So one of the waiver requests we have for you is that our, our lighting from our property at twenty and twenty and a half would spill into the alleyway. In the future, if we start doing more improvements in the alley or revitalize the, the barn/stable building in the back, we'll come back to you with, with another site plan for that. The building will be fully sprinkler. There's a grease trap out back for the restaurant use. Stormwater is handled by underground detention and two tree box filters, which leads me to the second waiver that we're requesting. In this zone, we're required to do some groundwater recharge. However, in the urban fill and the high groundwater, we're not able to do that here. So we are asking for a waiver to not reduce, to increase the volume of water that's leaving the site. To be clear, we won't be increasing the rate of runoff. It will leave it the same. We're just basically building some underground detention and we'll meter that out slowly. And like we said, there are two tree box filters that will assist with providing some treatment and detention of that stormwater. And the last thing that we are requesting is a conditional use permit. It's unique in this area that we have a build-to line, and so the building needs to be built right to the property line, unless we receive a conditional use permit from the board. So that will allow a private restaurant to have seating in the front and then this balcony overhanging. So we request approval of that conditional use permit. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions? Counsel Pearson?
You had me until you said overhanging, so the, all the overhang will be on the private property. There's no hanging over right away.
Yeah, no, no. We've watched those fights.
Okay.
Entertaining. Glad they weren't mine.
No, it's really just here at this entrance.
Just rid of the entrance down at the bar.
It's just right here at the entrance.
Shark tank.
You're gonna like them either.
Suzanne?
I'm looking at your architectural rendering.
Scoot up a little bit into the microphone there.
I know architects love adding vegetation to their renderings. Either they're trying to hide something and they put a tree there. But I, I think it looks lovely. So my question is, are you really gonna have a living wall there, or is that just an architectural? There's like, you're not that one.
You didn't propose a living wall.
Where's the...
Keep going.
It's the back space.
Yeah, see those green squares?
Elevations, yeah.
No.
No. Actually...
Not yet.
I can talk to you about that, because I did a study and tried to put one on the north wall of the Smile Building, between the north wall of the Smile Building and the south wall of Gibson's. And I've even got the models. The problem is, on that particular location, it didn't work, because we didn't have enough good light long enough, and part of the living wall would've looked like a wire cage and the other part would've had green on it, so it didn't work there. We're gonna have some green element, to be honest. It wouldn't surprise me if I used artificial grass. Just trying to get there. Let me tell ya, on the roof deck up top, it's gonna be all artificial grass.
Yeah, they use that a lot. I would say, I don't know what it is about crab apples, but they seem to be very popular.
We know this.
Yeah. So in that space, there's gonna be a lot of people, so you really want a tree that's more vertical and has more interest.
Yeah, I'll tell ya, I know this is... This is what we're getting approved on, but I may come back, because I've still toyed with the idea that I want a fountain somewhere in downtown that'll attract kids to run through it, and I'd love to have it on my private property. So we're gonna heat this. We plan to have hydroponic heating. That's what we're gonna do anyway, because it's virtually impossible for the Bank of New Hampshire stage. We plow that at our expense, and you have to pull all the snow out. You can't stack it at the end, because that's how they get on the stage. So we're gonna heat not only our site, but eventually, we're gonna, we're gonna do the alley when we come in for that.
So that is a space that you, looks like from the, the graphic, is that's a pub, it's a, it's people's space?
It's people's space for customers of our food court. It is not a public park.
Well, that's what I meant. I mean, it's for the public to use when they're at the restaurant. It's for people.
Customer.
So I...
For people. Private space.
Yeah, right, but it's a, it's a gathering place for those people.
That's correct.
So I, I would either get rid of the crabs, do something that's really gonna be conducive to your use with people walking through it, even the paying customers. And you can, the, the Co-op has a green wall, and that kind of faces...
South.
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 East a little bit?
It's on the south side, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think, it was hard for me to see where the north arrow was, but basically where that space is, is west, which gets lots of sun, believe it or not.
That wall will be facing west. That's right. We'll look at that.
And that, that's the worst sun in the summer. It's hot and there's no shade, so...
I think that'll be reflective, you know? It'll be, the west will be reflecting off the building into that, but there's buildings to the right of that will be really shielding a lot of, like, the sunset.
Elm Grove's building. It's right behind us.
Is it about a story up?
Uh, it's, yeah, a story... Uh, it's, yeah, a story of ours, yeah.
Well, when the, it's, it, that doesn't happen until the sun starts setting.
Right.
So I'm just saying that that, I, I just think that choice of if you're going to do it, do it or get rid of them or something.
We'll get rid of them.
So staff, Suzanne shared your concern about the crab apples and sort of the, the lack of diversity. So, um, we're working with terrain planning to update. Um, and the, the shortlist they gave us of potential substitutions or suggested substitutions are a Lyndon, a maple, a service berry, a honey locust. So I don't know if you have strong opinions either way, any of those, but we'll work with staff to, uh, we'll provide a revised landscape plan.
I think that they can muddle through it.
Yeah, we'll provide a revised landscape plan that offers diversity and also.
They can leaf through it.
Leaf through it, yeah.
Oh, aren't we clever?
Or get rid of some.
I think, I think the trees will enhance that space.
Yeah.
So I think you don't want to get rid of them, but I, I think you just pick a better variety. And staff can help you.
I mean, in this, in this version, in this first iteration, it is like a park. But I wouldn't be a bit surprised if we come back and change it. I'd like to have that be my winter skating rink, King Town Skating Rink, to be honest. Rockwell.
Wow.
Yeah.
Question, and, and I'm just curious because the buildings, um, adjacent are one-story, two-story, and then you go up five stories. I'm just curious why five and not four to make it a little bit more, you know, cohesive. It just seems.
Well, there's a five-story right beyond the Bank of New Hampshire stage. It's four and a tall four, uh, in the, what I call the Endicott Furniture Building. Economics. Dropping that story means the per-square-foot triple net rent would have to start at about thirty-two dollars per square foot, which means your office rents would be forty-two dollars a foot. And that's about, that's about twenty-five percent higher than the highest office rent downtown Concord. If there's anybody who likes it, it'd be, you know, it was purely economics.
It was economics.
Yeah.
Capital Commons is across the street.
And Capital Commons is actually taller.
Yeah, across the street. I'm just kind of, when I was looking at this, it was just like boom, boom, and it's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I, I would just like to say, I totally agree with you. I've had the same feeling about the, the size, where it was, relationship to other.
And it was funny. I first came in with a two-story building and the first comment from design review was you're wasting a site. The last open-side-down test.
So it was just the question of, you know, and, and you answered with economics and.
Yeah, if I could build a four-story for the same price as the five-story, I would do it. I'd bring the scale down. It really is economics. I, I can tell you right now, that's fifteen thousand square feet. The highest per-square-foot office rents in Concord is right across the street. Um, at, at, you know, Hotel Concord building. Um, and we're going to be twenty percent higher than that. And it's a risk. I mean, I can tell you, I don't have any tenants lined up at that price. But to make the project economic works, Friendly Toast can't afford to pay four hundred and sixty dollars a foot. That's more expensive than they paid on the outskirts of Austin. Well, they built those before. Prices went through the roof and prices are not going down. Newsflash, folks.
Counsel Pearson?
For staff, the Flatley Building is at five or six stories.
It's going to be taller than this, five.
It's going to be taller than this, right?
Plus it's on a hill.
And the Kennedy Apartments are obviously a lot taller.
Yeah. So there's, so it's consistent on the, on the line coming down the west side of.
Yeah. I mean, we're obviously a lot taller than the, uh, Co-op. And we're taller than the Bank of New Hampshire stage. We're a little bit taller than Endicott, but the same height as across the street.
So utility in question, trash onsite or?
Uh, no, we have the wonderful.
Downtown trash.
Trash, yeah, they have to lug that down probably to the dumpsters at the Co-op. I think those are the ones.
At the Co-op?
Yes, we actually own eight, the eight spaces on the far western, uh, parking lot of the Co-op are mine.
The retaining wall?
Yeah, are mine. I've let the Co-op use it, but we have room, if we, if we can use our own dumpsters, that's where we'd put them.
And up through the parking lot?
Yeah.
So you got a question. I know it's not on the plan, it's not in the red line, but indulge me for a sec on the stable building. So no matter what happens to that stable building, it looks like you got a little alleyway between the Pullman car and the, and the stable. Uh, is there access behind that stable building towards the Co-op side?
Oh, don't we wish there were?
Okay, yeah.
Um, because it'd be easier for utility runs and stuff, but no. I mean, literally at the back of that building where you see that dotted line and then where it jogs up against our red, that's a retaining wall. It's crumbling, in fact. I had to write the owner of thirteen to fifteen South State Street to get permission to go on their property to fix it. There is no room. That, that separation between the stable and the back of the freight box kitchen is just to make sure we make code for access.
And, and you're up against the retaining wall on the other side to the, to the apartment building?
Elm Grove hits the second floor of this building, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a small building. It's a great building. It'll be great to save that one because it was the stable built at the same time. Uh, our plan for that is to put another restaurant bar in there or brew pub. We're talking to a couple and then like, as Aaron said, we'd come back with the whole alley design because I can tell you owning Capital Plaza, which I worked on in nineteen eighty-three, we built it. The biggest challenge we have in Capital Plaza is for the retail tenants who are on the west side closest to the garage. People do not like walking down alleys, uh, even in the daytime. So the only way you overcome that is you light it and you make it interesting. That's why we hang umbrellas in the summer. And if you go down there now, there are a lot of Christmas lights. And even with that, it's very difficult because people don't like walking into what they see as a sort of a canyon. So we'll have to be creative on that to make that space work.
Well, a living wall would be great. Kenny, are we kidding?
Start on the hand, Jeff.
So as you've seen tonight, I get a lot more technical a lot of times. So I noticed on the south side, your sidewalk along to, um.
Co-op.
To, yeah, that side, it's only four feet.
Yes.
Does not meet five-foot requirement, correct?
This one here coming out?
Yep. So I'll have to take a look at that. This, I'm curious, I'm going to use this. What is this little jut out here? I was trying to understand what that was on the plan. It doesn't appear on the elevations, but it's.
Is that the door?
It's a door.
Maybe a door swing, right?
The door swing, I think, to go to the upper floors.
Little square box.
Talking about the thing next to the door.
Yeah, the next to the door swing. If you actually look at the, the site plan that you have sheet C one point two, it shows it grayed in as if it's.
Like a beam or something.
Yeah. So I'm unders, I'm trying to figure out what this is because then you don't have five feet there.
Oh, okay. We'll, we'll take a look at it.
What is that?
Architecturally, I know there's nothing on the building.
Yeah, that's, and that's why it confused me. I'm like, maybe it's just a, you know.
You put it in to see if you'd pick it up.
We might have traced something incorrectly.
So, yeah, and, and that's what I'm guessing maybe it was, or it was a previous submission. So is there going to be some sort of barrier between the park, uh, sidewalk in the brick area? Is that going to just be open similar to like, um, across the street at O's?
It's going to be open, but we are anticipating that they'll put down temporary planters, something to delineate because they want their customers to come out through the restaurant, not just walk in. They're going to direct their customers to their main door. Um, we're not showing anything permit, but we do anticipate they'll put temporary out there in the, in the warmer months.
Is, I know you don't have a lot of space onsite, but maybe it's possible to work with the city to install another set of bike racks because the next one is in front of the Bank of New Hampshire stage and there's only one loop. And I'm thinking if you're going to have office, you're going to have restaurant, you're going to have people, it might be nice if we can squeeze another one in between the trees there along the front edge.
Could be a piece of sculpture or whatever you have.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's already a pattern that we have down Main Street. So you've got to keep the red loop. Boom, that's kind of what's there. Now, the alley, is there any vehicular access using that at this point or is it strictly pedestrian?
No, it's being used as the access to the loading dock for the Bank of New Hampshire stage. I own it, but in, I gave a permanent access easement to Bank of New Hampshire stage. Otherwise, there was no practical way for them to load acts.
Right. My only act, question, and maybe when you come back for redoing the alley, I think it'd be neat if we could connect the sidewalk across the alley and continue the concrete across here so it feels more pedestrian-ish, less driveway-ish. I know it's not part of this site plan, but please think of that as a way.
We're going to rip up that whole surface. I want people to walk by there and go, "I want to walk down that alley." Even if the restaurants are closed, I want people to go in that space. We've committed, um, if you look at the original design of the Bank of New Hampshire stage, the, the loading dock we have there now is wooden, but that's temporary. There's a permanent plan that brings it right out, actually touches the front of the stable building. And we did, um, thanks to the TIF by the city, um.
Poles.
Um, we're getting the poles out, the power's out. So by the way, that TIF was estimated on a lot less expensive building. I'm, I'm betting the payoff's about two years for that TIF. That's taken a lot of effort and that's finally done. The last thing to be done there's, they were sawing off the poles and pulling them out. We also committed though to Elm Grove because they accommodated us with some easements up by Star Hot Dog on the corner. What I call Star Hot Dog, you know, right there beyond Wyman Coffee, that we're going to put in access when we do the alley from their parking lot down. We're going to reserve the right to gate that so that it doesn't become a pedestrian passageway when we're not open. But, yeah, we're, we're going to make that alley special.
Okay, couple more things. This container kitchen.
Yeah.
Does it require water and separate sewer? Because nothing is shown.
We have a water service going to it. We do not have.
I thought you had water going under it for future stable, but it didn't show a tee or a tie or anything.
Yeah, we have one going to that as well. I'll verify that.
Does it need, the reason I'm asking is you have the grease trap. And I'm sure the grease trap aside is for the two existing inside, does this now have to have access to that grease trap potentially? A, a food truck wouldn't because they're standalone, but does a container have the same, something to look into?
Yeah.
It has water waste, yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely worth looking into and probably should consider the stable building too.
We have water to do.
And rim in the grease trap? Or you do a separate grease trap for that?
Yeah, we'll look at the grease trap to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we.
Upside it to accommodate.
And also now you're talking fountain and.
Yeah.
You talked about you'd like to do something green wall or everything. Uh, how about we look at sustainability and say, how about we do a partial green roof instead of actually putting turf?
We're using the roof. We're putting a bar up there.
But could you have the last ten feet on one side be something that people might want to sit next to the bar and look at these beautiful green plants? And then you're actually trapping some of that water. So your whole idea that you can't infiltrate is being done up partially in the roof.
I mean, we're, I was always thinking of having planters up there, but, uh, the current plan is, uh, I'm having a airstream trailer redone as a bar and we're going to drop that on top.
Right, and I'm just thinking glass wall, almost like you have at the front so people don't walk onto it. You could have almost a bar rail and then you have the green to the roof.
Yeah.
So people can't fall off.
Take a look at that.
Sit there and it's just something to consider because this is an area where I think, I think it'd be really cool. You've, you're using the roof. Normally people do green roofs and you never see them. You don't ever realize them. And I think this might be something that would be a really neat feature up here. And maybe you can draw people more apt to come there. From an architectural standpoint, my only comment is, please change the green. It look, it looks like a DOT bridge girder.
Well, that's what we tried to do.
No, no, please don't. I see that road going up and down the highway.
And you don't like those?
Good news is. We're going to use.
I am a roadway engineer. I work on these, I'm, I have enough green.
So, yeah, no, I get that. That's supposed to look sort of like an oxidized copper, but I, one of the ver- versions we had, if you look through the different choices and we tallied them all, the chamber did actually, had sort of a, what I call a Dartmouth green vertical panel. And trying to pacify some of my older friends who wanted the most traditional design and some of my younger ones who wanted the wild blue one, I'm sort of leaning towards maybe a Dartmouth green there or darker green. So, uh, my goal is this building will be up long after I'm gone. I don't want people talking about Dupree's folly the way some people talked about the Employment Security Building, although frankly, I liked the period architecture represented.
Yeah, I mean, it just, and my, my only other question is, it seems weird that the windows are squished to both sides up against the pilasters or whatever you call those, the brick columns. Why not centered evenly across?
That's one of those architect questions.
When you look at the building facade, um, those windows are actually spaced pretty evenly and it's the pilasters that are the difference. And so it's really a play on the materials of the brick pilaster and the center panel.
You're telling me that.
And it also gives it a little bit more of a, if they were all equally spaced, it would look real. We had one that, it looks really homogeneous, so it's based on just a little bit off so they're not quite.
It just, yeah, the, the even windows kind of matches a lot of what is downtown on every building.
That's, and that's what Architectural Design Review said, "Don't do that."
Like I said, overall, I just, it's the green that really just got me. You know, I know you're saying it's supposed to look like a patina or maybe it really doesn't match that here, but.
That's what we were going for, yeah.
We had, we had some samples from design review.
So lighting, we didn't see any nighttime pictures, but I don't know what we've got for lighting, uh, as far as lighting the building and, uh, exterior lighting.
So we basically have lighting at the entrances and then there'll be some ground lighting in the back patio that's on the, the landscape plan. We have a lighting plan.
But we don't have any building lighting, do we?
We don't. You know, there's, there's a lot of lighting in, on Main Street that kind of tend to light those buildings.
Yeah.
And there's lighting, uh, at the overhang of the belt lane.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so that overhang has lighting.
Yeah. I, I saw the traditional street light that's out there on the, on the bump out. Is that there now? I don't think it's, is it there now?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. We got knocked, actually got knocked down a little bit ago, but they, about a year ago, they got it back up.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I only had one other thing in the, the report. It talks about if you decide to make changes to the architecture that you'll come back to ADR to discuss it. It actually needs to come, I think, back to this board as the decision-making board. ADR ranks the recommendations, just to clarify that.
Where did Teal finish in the, in the ranking?
Uh, surprisingly, he came in second. The one that actually got the most votes was the most traditional.
Yeah.
With, and if you look at the comments, which I think the chamber put out there, and then you looked at the age profile, as you can tell, people go, "I'm older. I like Concord the way it used to look before the DES building was built."
Okay, let's, uh, let's, yes.
Sorry, quick question. I just want to jump on a, a comment that Jeff made about the sidewalk. We missed that, that was four feet. Do you think you'll be able to accommodate a five-foot or do you need a waiver? Because if you're going to need a waiver, then I think you should address that tonight while they're here.
For that bump out?
For the, no, for the sidewalk on the south side, the four-foot, it's the access to the kitchen. The dimension says four feet.
It does say four feet.
I think it's four feet because of the wall that's there. I don't know that we have five.
That's on our property.
I think we should ask for the waiver, um, if...
You better to ask for it now if you don't need it.
If the board would be amenable, we will certainly look and make that four and a half or five if the site can allow, but I believe it's a constraint, and that's a, like a, it's a, it's not the main entrance, it's a backup door.
Can you give me the verbiage for that?
That's where you're, that's where you're gonna be probably bringing all your trash out, so you're gonna be carrying bins.
No, no, it'll go out the back door and then down the alley. That, the only, and the, if I recall correctly, the only reason you can't get the five there is up against the... Our property line isn't the co-op building line. There's that granite retaining wall for our whole lot on that side, and we're, we're five feet from the property line. We're not five feet, we're four feet from the edge of the retaining wall.
And that retaining wall would upset the co-op's mason ring.
Yeah.
Is, yeah.
Yeah, we, we're, that's that. I don't wanna build a new co-op.
Okay, other questions? Staff, I said? Wanna just get some public testimony if we need to public... Okay, love you guys hot back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any member of the audience wish to address this application? No? Nobody? No, okay. We will close the public hearing. Any other discussions from the board? Pretty straightforward? Okay, uh... Sorry.
So I'll make one comment. I showed this to my family, all of whom are well under fifty, and they all loved it. Very cool.
What, they loved it, cause there's a friendly toast there. Don't...
Oh, that's also the, and it looks like Otter Nashville a little bit too.
Yeah, they loved the friendly toast. That was it, and upstairs bar area.
No.
No Texas flags, right? Can I get into that? Okay. All right, uh, four point one in your packets here. Four point one is to grant Architectural Design Review approval for the preferred alternative design, or identified as option B with the understanding that the applicant will further study and refine some design details as recommended by ADR committee and return to ADR prior to construction. Uh, and again, to Jeff's note, it will, through ADR will come back to us for, for approval, so uh, yes.
No, instead of ADR coming back to us, or are we going to, Jeff, could you make your point again?
If, I guess the question is, would it go back to ADR first, and then ADR would provide comments to us, but we would be the decision.
I'd wanna go back to ADR just because it's, it's important a building enough that I want their feedback, and then be able to address it with the applicant, and then be able to make the decision.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So granting ADR approval, kind of a conditional approval for option B with the understanding that the applicant will further study, refine the designs, come back for any changes made. Are we okay with that? Uh, so grant Architectural Design Review. Someone like to make a motion to grant Architectural Design Review as outlined?
Some will.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries four point two is to grant conditional use permit, CUP, in accordance with section twenty-eight, five, forty-eight G two of the zoning ordinance for relief from the requirement of the Central Performance District to build to the lot line to allow for construction of a private terrace to be used for outdoor dining. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
Some will.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries uh, four point three is to grant the following waivers to the site plan regulations, and those are section twenty-nine oh four, building and facade lighting, uh, twenty-nine oh seven, nuisance and glare, uh, and section twenty-two oh eight-three, off-site flows. Would someone like to make a motion?
And we're gonna add...
We're gonna make them, yeah. We're gonna put the waiver in for the four foot.
Yep, so um, to section twenty-one point oh five-two, to allow for the sidewalk with the four feet or five feet is required.
Okay, so that'll be the third waiver that's in there. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
Some will.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and grant, uh, four point four is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a new five-story building along with two outdoor patio areas at twenty to twenty and a half South Main Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, one, two, three, four, and five, and then subsequent conditions, one through five. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined? Some move?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yep.
Could we add in here that they work with staff to at least investigate the possibility of some sort of rooftop garden to meet sustainability rules within our guidance?
Appropriate, Heather, or Beth?
It's up to you. It's up to you all, yeah. I mean, asking them to have a conversation is totally reasonable.
Asking them to have a conversation is fine.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna be, it looks like there's gonna be some discussion still going on about landscaping plans.
Yes, so landscaping plans, a living wall, no, but maybe some other option in that to, to entice people in, and maybe a rooftop.
Sustainability. It's a big building, and it's taken out all the green spaces, or a lot of the green spaces there.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good luck with the project. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Seven G. Uh-oh, yeah, so for the record, I've, I've gotta recuse myself uh, from this discussion, so I will be leaving the room and getting banished to the back area. Matt Dix will be taking over for this particular discussion.
I too am getting kicked off the island.
Okay, come on, Earl, we'll go get a drink. We have a quorum?
Yes.
If I'm gonna call the Barley House, I'll call yourself.
Roll in all of us.
All right, welcome. Um, my apologies for having to take over for the first time for you all, but I'll do my best. I have a cheat sheet here, so this is item seven G on our agenda. Wilcox and Barton, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, requesting major site plan approval for construction of a new structure to be used as a community center and conditional use permit approval to allow for access drives to be less than a hundred and twenty-five feet from the intersection of a local road at seventy-sixth Community Drive, Neighborhood Residential District. So we will, let's see, I'm a cheat sheet, open the public hearing. So there's no development or regional impact or any of that.
We did that last month.
We did that, okay, that's right. Okay, so open the public hearing. Welcome.
Uh, good evening. Aaron Lambert with Wilcox and Barton. Um, I'm going to let the public partner, partnership introduce themselves, um, and then we'll walk through the architecture, the landscape architecture, and lastly, I'll walk you through the site plan, so just to give you a little preview of, of what we're gonna do.
Okay, uh, my name is Chris Eman. I'm the director of the Boys and Girls Club, and um, we merged with the Pennacook Community Center March of, uh, this year, actually. And uh, hired team engineering to do a study of the existing buildings, and it was pretty obvious, pretty quickly, that those were going to need to come down. It was gonna be too expensive to, to retrofit them and get them up to, to what we wanted, our, to the standards that they needed to be. Um, and then they quickly kinda got to work to uh, to look at the site, look at the land, and uh, get a suitable building uh, to replace uh, the structures that are currently there. So it's gonna be one facility, and it will serve forty-six um, ECE early childhood kids, infants, toddlers, and preschoolers, and forty-five um, school-aged children in an after-school program setting. And then, of course, um, as we went along, uh, the, the discussion with the uh, public library came along pretty quickly. It was an opportunity to be able to see if it was possible for them to join us and uh, and relocate uh, the Pennacook Library extension to, to this, uh, to this property, and that is why Matt is here this evening.
Let me, oh, okay, sorry, we, we did practice this before. I apologize. Uh, my name is Matt Walsh. I am the interim deputy city manager for development. Uh, I'm here tonight uh, as a city's representative for the public-private partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, for clarification, uh, as Mr. Eman alluded to, um, the city and the Boys and Girls Club are partners in three different ways. The first one is, uh, the city has applied for and secured seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of community development block grant funds, which will flow through the city to their project to help build the Boys and Girls Club's share of the, of the development. Uh, secondly, uh, the city and the Boys and Girls Club are uh, in the process of entering into a purchase and sale agreement for one thousand four hundred and seventy-one square feet of this facility that's gonna be developed. Um, that partnership and purchase and sale agreement were, was approved by the city council on December twelfth of this year. Um, at the same night, the city council appropriated the sum of one point three million dollars uh, to develop that space, um, which we'll be purchasing, actually to pay for that space that'll be developed by the Boys and Girls Club, which we'll purchase when it's completed. Uh, lastly, uh, the city, uh, through its capital improvement program, project number seventy-eight, uh, which is our annual highway program, will be reconstructing a variety of roads in Pennacook in the coming uh, spring and summer of twenty-three and fall of twenty-three. Uh, one of those roadways is Dolphin Street, and um, as, as Ms. Lambert will show you in the site plans, um, as part of that, that effort, there will be a new sidewalk constructed on Dolphin Street to close off the large curb cut that already exists at the site. And essentially, the cost of that sidewalk, which is about sixty thousand dollars, will be shared equally between the Boys and Girls Club and city.
All right, well, let me, let me orient you a little bit to the site, um, before we walk you through the, the renderings, both architectural and landscaping. So, um, this is a point nine six acre site located in Pennacook. It basically has three frontages, so it has Community Drive, uh, basically to the east, Dolphin Street along the south, High Street along the west side, and then two residential butters to the north. Um, it was previously four lots, all owned by the Pennacook Community Center, now the Boys and Girls Club of um, Central New Hampshire, um, and those have since been merged. So you'll see some, some notes in the comment section, but it is now one ninety, point nine six, just shy of an acre lot. And just to give you an idea of um, what exists today, so this is the community center, which was built by the community, um, and it has a wonderful history and story, um, of how the neighborhood and the community came together to build this building. Um, but unfortunately, it has um, outlived its, its use, and it has some other deficiencies, including the fact that it's not ADA accessible. Along the way, uh, Pennacook Community Center acquired these two residences and converted those into childcare. Um, so we are proposing to demolish all three of these buildings, um, and construct um, a new combined community center, um, with public space for the library. So I'm gonna let uh, team engineering.
Absolutely. My name is John Turner. I'm an engineer at, at Team Engineering, and um, we are responsible for the architectural and the, uh, the building engineering components of this. It's been a really fun, uh, design project because uh, we met with staff at multiple Boys and Girls Club facilities. We had a couple of neighborhood, um, input sessions where we listened to the neighbors. Uh, then, of course, we engaged the city, and the city's provided some input too, so um, what you see is a, a function of, of kind of a, an extended, uh, design project, and, and we're really proud of certainly the functionality of this building, right? Um, the, you know, the way it's gonna work for Boys and Girls Club, uh, the access to the building for parents to come and go, and, and then, uh, the pleasant access and um, small, but will be a, a sunny and pleasant space for the library extension. Uh, so again, that, that library extension is in the, the foreground, um, and um, so it's that, that green at the beginning, and then the, the taller section has a, a community room space. Uh, the, the childhood classrooms are over on the left, and the, uh, the bluish, uh, portion of the building, and then the playground, you'll see in a moment, is, is to the left, uh, which includes, just as an example, a really cool feature, the, a bathroom that's accessible directly from the playground is an example of little features that we've, we're gonna include in this building. The, what I'll call the back of the building, uh, faces the, uh, the other neighbors, um, uh, is, is really service entrances for the building, and so, you know, very limited fenestration, and and one of the other themes, it, it's very subtle here, but it's there. There's solar panels up top, so one of the challenges that, uh, the major donor, uh, made to us is to make the building super energy efficient. Uh, so we're certainly gonna do that, um, by a combination of an incredible envelope, uh, but also features like solar panels on the roof. So, and then, uh, the little porch structure on the left, uh, was one of the, uh, or I should say inspired, certainly partially by Architectural Design Review, is one of the features that they asked us to get rid of. We originally had a shed that was very prominent in the entry experience, and, and so, uh, we've, um, created this little feature to, to store equipment that Boys and Girls Club needs.
All right, hi, that's uh, Romy Mauro, Train Planning and Design. So we did the site landscaping as well as the playground design for this project, and again, we spoke with staff on their wants and wishes and what they'd like to see in the playground as well. So this has definitely been a collaborative community project where everybody kinda comes together, trying to make it the best fit for, for everybody, for the users and the staff alike. Um, so this is showing the entrance off of Community Drive with one-way traffic flow. Uh, we've put landscape on either side of the entrance, as well as the walkway to Rolf Park to kinda define entrances. We've used a variety of species to have, um, shade trees for climatic relief, um, and to offset the heat island effect. We've used ornamental shrubs and trees to give seasonal interest and effect, as long, as well as evergreens for screening. Um, we have a robust buffer in the back between the rear of the building and, um, oops, sorry, the fr-
There's the back.
Yeah, to, um, kinda buffer between that, and the property owner to that side, and then along Dolphin Street, we have, right now, all of the pavement kinda busts right up to the building, which creates a really unsafe environment for people driving off their kids. I can speak to that firsthand. Um, so now there will be the separation between the street, a sidewalk, and a row of street trees, as well as a low wall, uh, probably about two, three feet tall, to adjust the grade with shrubs planted on top of that to block headlight glare and kinda buffer some of those cars. So it creates a much better flow for everybody, creating separation between drop-off and the general neighborhood traffic flow. And then the front showing the entrance to the playground, which will be natural elements, um, lots of interactive play, um, not your typical plastic structure in the center, or... And then coming off High Street, that's the one-way exit, um, and we've, again, tried to soften and buffer that fence that will enclose the playground to try to make it a little bit more aesthetically appealing. Butters on that side. And that's the back again, yep.
So we do have the landscape plan. If you wanna go into more details, but what I'd like to do is, is dive into the site plan, um, unless anybody has questions at this point. So as we've mentioned, this is a full redesign, uh, redevelopment of the block, um, so that has, um, you know, allowed us to solve some existing site challenges that existed, um, and also create a, a space that works not only for the users of the building, but hopefully for the entire neighborhood. So as Matt said, our project, the timing of it, um, is really good because right now, um, if you drive down Dolphin Street, the majority of the parking for the Pennacook Community Center is all along Dolphin Street, um, and it's in, into Dolphin Street. So, um, there's basically the entire front edge is one giant curb cut, and the car is back into the street. So, um, you can imagine that during busy drop-off and pickup, it was extremely hectic and dangerous, um, and at the same time, there's not a clear and safe pedestrian route. Um, at the same time, there's also, um, some stormwater issues there, so, um, the, this definitely gives us an opportunity to improve the site. Um, so this is the site plan. Um, it's about an eighty-nine hundred square foot building. Um, about seventy-four hundred of it, um, is for the use of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, and about fourteen seventy-one, as Matt mentioned, um, will be purchased by the city, and that's on the right-hand side. They each have their own dedicated entrance coming out to the sidewalks that run parallel to Dolphin Street. Uh, so we are proposing one-way circulation, so the traffic will enter Community Drive, from Community Drive, come in to and around the building, um, and that's where you'll see the parking. We have twenty-five parking spaces, and we were granted a variance from the planning board, um, for that number of parking spaces. So there's twenty-five spaces in the front with two ADA-accessible spaces. One space is located directly across from each of the uses. Um, and then one of the things that you may assume when you drive in, there's two spaces there, those are for, um, parking the vans or buses that the club has. Um, so we wanted to have a dedicated space for those that didn't take away from parking, um, for the daily users. Basically, um, the, the Dolphin Street improvements will also provide about ten parking spaces, so we'll have in total thirty-five parking spaces in the vicinity. Um, there is, um, wonderful pedestrian connectivity, not only throughout our site, but connecting to the right-of-way. Um, so we'll have a connection, um, from Community Drive. There's already a crosswalk that goes to Rolf Park, which is located directly to the east. Um, so as part of the off-site improvements, we'll be building a sidewalk that runs north, and would bring people to our entrance, so if they wanted to go to the library or to the daycare, that'll be an easy connection. Um, and that's also a great way, if they wanna take the children over to the park, so we made sure there was a safe pedestrian connection that connected to a sidewalk. Um, the improvements will include this beautiful new sidewalk along Dolphin Street, ten spaces, um, and then again, we'll put in, um, new concrete tip downs and a crosswalk at the corner of Dolphin Street and High Street. So what we've now created is a safe, accessible pedestrian route from High Street, and then also from our site. Um, so there'll also be another route. If you walk along the building, if you came into or were leaving the playground, there's also going to be a sidewalk on the, on our property side of High Street. Um, the building will be serviced by municipal water and sewer. The building will be fully sprinkled. Um, as John mentioned, the roof will have solar panels on it, um, and also the stormwater will be handled all on-site by underground infiltration chambers. Let's see, Romy talked a little bit about the playground. Um, there is a dumpster. Um, when you first drive in, it will be on a concrete pad, and will be fully screened. It was one of the concerns that Architectural Design Review raised. Um, we worked with staff and confirmed that it really is the only location where we could put it, where we had adequate access, and it was outside of the setbacks. Because we are bordered by residential users or, or use on three sides, the setback from a property line that's a residential use is twenty-five feet, um, so we weren't able to tuck it in this corner. Uh, but it will be screened, um, so we feel comfortable that, between that and, um, the landscaping that Romy has added, we're helping to, um, screen that, but it is sort of a necessity. The nice thing about its location is it will be very convenient to the back maintenance doors. Um, one of the programs that the club runs is, um, they receive food from the food bank, and I don't wanna step on Chris's toes, he can explain it much better than I, um, but they provide a great number of meals, um, to the children and their families at the club here in Concord, and they're looking to expand that program here, so, um, there's direct access to the kitchen, there's direct access to the back of the City of Concord space, um, and it will provide an easy space if somewhere were to pull up. They can park here to unload that food, so it'll serve two purposes. We have the dumpsters, which only need to get emptied once or twice a week. Also, we can pull in here to, um, bring that food in. So we are asking for a conditional use permit as part of our project, um, the, for driveway separation. Given our close proximity to the two intersections, um, it was difficult for us to get a driveway that was more than a hundred and twenty-five feet away. Um, so we do feel like we have proposed the driveways in a location that is the safest, um, and is certainly a significant improvement over what exists today. So by making the driveway one-way, we have moved the entrance as far away from Dolphin Street intersection with Community Drive as possible, so that we don't feel there'll be an issue with people queuing. Um, right now, car's back up, um, from the site into both Community Drive and Dolphin Street. Um, so it'll be one-way, and then exiting onto High Street. Again, um, it's within a hundred and twenty-five feet, but it will be a stopped condition, and recognizing, um... and recognizing the condition that's out there today significantly improved in terms of safety by providing dedicated parking spaces and eliminating those conflicts and creating this shorter, safe space for pedestrians to cross. The only other thing I want to mention is that there are four light poles on site. They are eighteen feet high. There are two wall pack lights that go out into the playground area. When we met with the Butters, light was a significant concern. They want to make sure that this isn't lit up. It's a residential neighborhood and they want to make sure it maintains that feel to the extent that it can. So, all of the lights will be on timers and controllable. They're fully downcast. It does comply with the city ordinance in terms of how much light gets, trespasses off the property line. But we also recognize when you're looking at a light, it can feel bright. And so, the lights will be directed such that they minimize that glare. We've supplemented it with landscaping to further reduce that. We really wanted to strike that balance. We needed to have enough light for safety while respecting the neighborhood and the night sky. So, those will all be on timers. They will only be on when they're needed and they'll be on separate systems. So, if the community room for the, the city is open at night, but the Penneka Community Center is closed, they don't need to, they won't need to function together. They'll have the functionality to, to function separately, so we can minimize their use. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Question.
Amanda.
In regards to snow storage, you guys have such a tight spy, spot. Are you anticipating losing any of, I know that you have marked, and this may not be the, the exact plan, site plan, but I know you have this, I'm going to say the southeast corner, just because of how we're looking at this, this bottom right, as the snow storage area. Do you anticipate losing parking spaces? Because you also have a significant amount of landscaping right there, which is great, but can you elaborate a little bit more about that?
Yeah, the reality is they'll be able to handle a little bit of snow on-site, but once they get to a point, they won't be able to lose parking spaces and they will have to remove it. So, there'll be a small amount that they can store in those areas, but otherwise, it's much like other commercial lots, it's going to have to be hauled.
So, the plan is to have it hauled away? Okay. So, it's not going to stay on-site?
Jeff.
Couple things. I think your sidewalk between the building and the back, your dumpster is only four feet. But I think you have room to scoot it out the foot, so I don't think we're talking variance.
Nope. We don't need a waiver for that. I will adjust that if it is only four feet.
Well, I'm a little confused. The sidewalk on the High Street side.
Yes.
Does the city need to provide any sort of waiver? Because that's your sidewalk connecting to Dolphin and it's half on city property, half on your property.
Yep. That's a great question. We've been working with staff to create a sidewalk there that meets accessibility. So, if that sidewalk borders the property line like it does, we will need to work with the city on a license for that.
Okay. Same. Now, so is the city, and Matt, you may be able to answer this better, is the city doing that crosswalk across High as part of their project or is it part of yours? Or is that still to be determined? She's looking at him and he's smiling.
No, I can answer it a little bit. So, it's, it's a unique situation because the Dolphin Street improvements are actually already out to bid there and under the purview of General Services. So, fortunately, where this is a collaborative project, I think it allows us to continue that collaboration. And Jose and I have been having these conversations as to how we reflect improvements on the site plans as part of our application in addition to that. So, to answer your question, the city through their contracting is going to build everything that's in the right-of-way. So, the crosswalks, the ADA ramps, the Dolphin Street improvements, the sidewalk. And that's where, when Matt explained that there'll be a cost-sharing portion of the sidewalk, because that's part of the application. So, the city's contractor will do all of that and then Milestone Construction, who's the project's construction manager, will pick up basically at the property line, will work together to coordinate where, exactly where that is and take care of it. So, the driveway curb cuts and the sidewalk that leads to the sidewalk along the right-of-way will be constructed by our site work contractor.
The reason I ask is you're putting so much more use here and you're talking about the park. The existing crowd walk on Community Drive does not have, have an ADA truncated dome accessible panel on the opposite side. And with the catch basin that's right there, I don't know if that catch basin is subject to flooding, but that can cause a problem if it's within the same area of the accessible path. So, that might be something, I don't know if there's a possibility of shifting a little bit.
Which, which catch basin are you concerned about?
There's a, on that corner that the crosswalk comes across on the park driveway, there's actually a catch basin. It's not turned on, but it's literally the grate is right on the corner. So, I don't know if it's possible to shift up a little bit more and not have the ramp kind of this whole flat area right on the corner that kind of, if you go up there after a baseball game and you watch, everybody cuts that corner and drives right across the top of the crosswalk.
Okay.
And I'd hate to see somebody get hurt, especially if we have the ability, there seems to be some collaboration available to maybe address it.
So, we have a planned meeting with General Services and Jose in, in early January. So, we'll bring that up there and, and ensure.
And that's fine. Your eighty, your parking, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, all right, I'm going to go here because this is easier. This right here?
Yes.
Those two panels, actually, I think you want to put it at the pavement transition. Normally, it's when you step onto the pavement from the, not down to that.
So, put them on the level landing.
Right. It would actually be across the front, similar to the ones you have on your sidewalks, as I try not to hit Jose in the face with the light. The only other thing I saw is on your, one of your truck turning templates.
Yes.
You have a light pole right there and it gets whacked by the front of one of the overhangs of the, I think it's the fire truck. Well, you use a bus, but it's essentially the fire truck.
That's the template we've been, yep.
No, I understand. No, 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 there's no complaints. I totally get that's what you've been given.
Okay.
But I just, I don't know if it can be shifted back a little bit, the light. And you said on lighting, I did notice on the lighting plan from the playground area to the Butters of the north, there is quite a bit of overlap. There's upwards of a half a foot candle that spreads.
We received a new lighting plan yesterday, so we will address that and make sure that that is below the, the point two.
Okay. All right. That's all I had, sorry.
Question that I had about the lighting plan, because I'm a victim of, of lights being
on utility poles across the street from the high school. So, I was just curious on your lighting plan, are any of them mounted on utility poles at all or are they all like self, you know, freestanding?
Yeah, they're all freestanding. So, there's four that'll have a two-foot base and a sixteen-foot pole and they're new LED fixtures on, only on a dedicated side light pole, not on utility poles.
Yeah, I'm just being conscious of the ones that are on Dolphin Street, you know, the light pollution into their front windows.
Yeah, and there are two utility poles that are going to be a part of this, so I, we will include that in our, our questions to General Services.
Nice, sorry, follow-up. I assume, looking at that sidewalk plan, it shows that there's utility poles on Dolphin Street, they're half in the curb line, half in the sidewalk. That's, I'm sure you're working with the city to address that.
So, that's where it's interesting because we're, we're not, General Services is rebuilding it and it's already out to bid. So, that's what we're going to talk to them out and find out what's their plan for that. And then we need to coordinate our connections because we have stormwater connections. So, yes, all of those questions to be answered.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the evergreens that are in the snow storage area probably shouldn't be there because those will definitely get smushed because their form goes right down to the ground. So, that's probably not a great idea. And then I'm, what, is that like a retaining wall?
Along the front?
Yeah.
It is. Yeah, there's, there's actually a pretty good drop-off between the north side of the property and the south side. And so, because the building and then the parking to meet ADA creates such a level platform, we've had to put a small two-to-three foot wall there to balance the grade.
I think you had a picture of it, didn't you actually?
Absolutely.
From a visual.
So, are the trees on top of the wall or below the wall?
Behind it.
So, there's trees between the sidewalk and the wall and then there are a series of shrubs and plantings between the parking space and the wall that are there to dull the glare of headlights.
So, I can't really see that.
Yeah, so the wall.
So, the wall is.
So, the wall is right here.
Okay, just show, show me right here. So, the wall's there, yep.
So, the wall's the dark gray and there's these.
This is up and this is down.
Correct.
Okay.
The street's lower, the parking lot's higher, a little bit.
Yes. Like two to three.
Gotcha. And so, all those plantings are perennials or shrubs?
The ones on top of the wall are shrubs. I have a printout here if it helps.
But I'm wondering if, so, wouldn't snow go on those? Do they, is that how they plow or do they drag it? Drag it out?
It's going to be brushing, so.
No, I've got the, I've got this.
Oh, no, yeah, that's fine. He explained before, thanks. And then it appears that there's a lot of bark mulch beds.
Lot of bark mulch beds?
Yeah. So, I don't know if that's, I, you know, I mean, bark mulch still needs maintenance. So, I was just wondering, it seems like there's a lot and I don't see, I mean, maybe it didn't want any grass.
We were trying to increase a lot of the landscape of the plantings because it's a residential zone, so we were trying to kind of soften it and kind of incorporate it more with that. So, we did kind of add more plantings than typical.
Yeah, no, no, it's not that. It's just that between the trees and the, the road, there's a lot of mulch.
Between the trees and the road.
Like where you've got your wall? Anyway, the beds, they said that there are, they say they're all bark mulch, but that's grass.
For the, along the street tree strip.
Okay, yeah. So, you probably, there's no definition in the planting plan that shows what's bark mulch and what's grass.
Okay, so something.
So, you probably want to do that. And then I would just ask staff to make sure we really maximize the shade trees in the parking area. But yeah, that's not on the plan as far as like what the ground cover is specified. It just said it's bark mulch everywhere unless it's noted and I just didn't see what was going on down there.
We will make sure that is clearly.
Just so that it's identified.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I go back to sidewalks? So, our site plan regs actually required sidewalks along all city streets in the urban growth boundary, or the board can request a fee to be put in escrow for future construction of a sidewalk. So, I don't think that was something that we caught before. I assumed, I thought that we were going to say to put them all the whole length of the property. So, that's what the site plan regs require.
Okay. We have, it, when we, when I was working with Karen, we were looking to get people to connect to the High Street and Community Drive, but we can talk, yeah. So, you're saying that we should have them duplicated on, I can't point, I apologize.
Community and High.
Community Drive and High Street on our side as well as on your side.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal of the site plan regs is to increase, you know, to expand the sidewalk network on both sides of the street adjacent to all sites. I think that's why it's saying shall be required versus if you can put it there, try. And they ask for the, the fee if you can't put it there. Trying to remember the conversation we had with Karen.
Yeah. I mean, when Karen and I were looking at it, to be honest, the one that we were focusing on was how do we create an accessible crossing at High Street? So, we were really trying to get people, because we were seeing the network, there's already one on High Street, there was one absent on Dolphin that we're providing, and then there's, you know, a beautiful one on Community Drive and the others are residents. So, we were not having a conversation about connecting them there because we felt like there was already a network and we were, we were completing the connection.
Well, I think that's along High Street heading north is just for future connection to extended sidewalk network in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Similarly, on Community Drive. I mean, it's not, I think, I think the point of the regs is not just that this building is connected to the street, but that the street network for all sites is sort of expanded in the city as a whole.
So, how do we want to handle that?
Well, I, I guess I was sort of, you'd have a, some kind of, I don't know, do we want to follow up? We could say that the, a fee will be required, but then that involves the city as well because they're a partner, so it's just a little bit sticky, I think.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it. I don't think, I, I understand what you're saying about the regulations. I think we weren't, when we were looking at it, we were seeing it as a connection and creating a complete network. So, I'd be curious if we were envision having those along those residences, but we can talk about it. I mean, whatever we need to do.
Okay.
To make sure we comply. So, why don't we talk about it?
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, before we turn it over to public testimony, Mr. Emmons, can you just talk about your relationship with the neighbors at the Concord site? Because my experience is very positive relations.
Bradley Street?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, yeah, I mean, we went through a similar exercise when we rebuilt that and, actually, speaking of sidewalks, that was actually one of the things I remember, one of the Butters specifically requesting so that there was access to, to the park there and we installed it. So, yeah, no, I, I don't think we've had any issues that I'm aware of and there's fewer Butters, you know, that are like directly.
Right.
Abutting that property unlike here. And of course, here, we've had a, one opportunity in particular where we had everybody in and just kind of started talking about the concepts and, and we got a lot, a lot of input as you can imagine, because it's right in their backyard. And Connie in particular has continued to have conversations to make sure that what we were putting out there was going to be something that they, they found acceptable. Hopefully, this evening as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, any more questions? So, we'll have you step back and we'll see if there's anybody in the audience that has There's a chance. No. Okay. So, with that, I think I can close the public hearing. Is that right? Do I have to do anything else first?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure if any of you, yes, you're, you can close the public hearing. We didn't talk about ADR at all. ADR did not recommend approval of this. I don't know if anyone wanted to discuss any of that or if we just want to sort of pass by that.
Want to do it in discussion?
Well, I, I don't know if you want to close the public hearing. If any, I just, I don't know if you're aware that ADR didn't recommend approval. We don't have to discuss it. We can, if everyone feels like we're at a point that we're free to move forward.
But it sounded like ADR's biggest issues were the fencing around, there was something with the building too or?
Oh, the whole building, yeah. But I think the building was.
So, it sounds like they've had community meetings, they've had Butters in the neighborhood. I mean, I'll admit, it wouldn't be my first choice for a building, but hearing the applicant talk tonight that they've already done the public outreach, they've already had a lot of meetings and the public's in support of it, I'm less inclined to say, make wholesale changes. I mean, the big green wall on one side wasn't, like I said, wouldn't be my first choice, but.
I just wanted to make sure that we were aware because we had.
Yeah, no, I did.
I wanted to get to the recommendations and say, oh, wait a minute.
I mean, that's the only thing I saw. Like I said, that one big green wall, I didn't know if, my only thing would have been, could we break that up, the one that faces the park? You know, if there's any way to do a mid-piece or something different, I don't know. But like I said, hearing that the applicants met and the Butters and neighbors and whatever community is kind of in support of it, I'm inclined to move forward and.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Is the, when you're looking at the, the actual learning center where the entrance sign is, is that L off of that part of the? Is, it's like this right here, is that?
The blue.
The blue, is that a separate use?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's that one?
That's daycare.
That's childcare.
That attaches to the park.
Okay. But it go, you go through the same entrance?
Yeah, so Suzanne, there's two main entrances and I apologize because I don't have a clicker. On the green, thank you, the green is the city's portion of the building. And so, that is the entrance to the library or the community space that will be City of Concord. And then, I can let John, John, do you want to point out the door? That door there is the main entrance.
No, I don't, that's, no, I just wanted to know what the, what the gray was, if it was part of that building, but it's a separate.
Same building.
It's absolutely part of it. It was just, just for fun to, you know, the, the different colors and, and certainly one of the feedback from our ADR was to minimize the strip mall factor and, and so, and, and this was part of the neighborhood input too, is that by at least boxes of slightly different[1722.08] to minimize the strip mall factor and so, and this was part of the neighborhood input too, is that by at least boxes of slightly different height, makes it look a little more like the residential neighborhood, houses of varying size. But, but absolutely, the, the blue, the white, the tan are all part of boys and girls club space. So it's, it's not a separate use, I guess is the point.
Right, so I mean, maybe that would, I mean, I'm not sure what ADR's issue was. Was it just the selection of the colors? Or they didn't like the whole, I don't have a problem with this boxing.
They had extensive issues with it. I, I think we don't necessarily need to go.
Okay.
Into them if nobody has those concerns. I mean, briefly, they, they, they wanted the variations in roof lines. They, they felt like this didn't reflect the neighborhood architecture because it's, it doesn't have any of the features of the architecture of the neighborhood. They suggested they go institutional, then, you know, so there was a whole slew of things, but we, again, we don't, that's just a brief summary.
Right, well, the original building they tore down has a flat roof, right?
Correct.
And so to Jeff's point here, it says in the ADR minutes that the ADR did not think it represents a community. But the community didn't seem to have any major concerns and they had the discussions.
Okay.
If I may add, it's a remarkable improvement of what building is to be allowed. So, I mean, I think they're just happy to have, I think what that is, is improvement to what is existing there.
Is it all like vinyl clapboards or are you doing different treatments on the walls?
Uh, it is mostly vinyl siding at this point. And, and part of the, the challenge for us, of course, is to keep it affordable.
Yeah, that's always the bottom line.
Anything else, Amanda?
I think, I think the landscaping is going to make a huge difference.
It always does.
Whether or not they agreed with the, you know, the look of the building, I think the landscaping is going to make a huge impact.
Well, if you look at this site today and you look at this. And I actually really, I really like the architecture of this. I think it, I think it's going to jazz the neighborhood up, so good job. All right, so we will close the public hearing now, look at that Jeff, I closed the public hearing. Okay, let's get into this.
Excuse me.
Any other discussion before we go to motions? All right, let's see if I can do this, Heather.
I have confidence.
You have confidence in me? All right, so we are looking at.
So roughly.
This one first, right?
Where it starts, if you did all that.
So we did that just now.
Yep.
Right? So the, the first motion would be to grant architectural design review for the proposed building design as submitted.
Period.
Period.
Period. Your motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the next is 4.2 to grant the conditional use permit in accordance with Article 28 711F, Alternative Parking Arrangements, Drive-Way Separation Alternatives, Zoning Ordinance to allow for the entrance and exit drives to be located less than 125 feet from the intersection of a local road, which is Dolphin Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And 4.3 is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a new single-story building for the use as a community and daycare center. 76 Community Drive, subject to the following precedent, subsequent conditions noted below. So precedent conditions, one, two, three, and four, and subsequent conditions, one through five. Do we want to say anything about the sidewalk?
Well, they, they would have to come back if they want to address it in a different way. So I think they said that they would discuss it with us, so we'll just leave it at that.
So comfortable with that? Your motion and major site plan approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Do you want to go get the gentleman?
Yeah, please, I don't want to do this.
You did great.
You did great.
Well done.
Thanks.
Well done.
More than planning commission to think about. You're next, David. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
Excuse me. You know, Heather, I have to honestly say, I'm normally the big sidewalk guy. I wouldn't connect, I wouldn't put people walking closer to the playground. But that's just me.
He took us down a road.
And that's why I.
Is that right? Oh, yeah.
Did you give him a fair trial before you hung him?
I didn't.
Yeah, you can hang him. Okay. All right, let's, uh, let's continue, let's continue on.
And I asked for compliments after I.
Nice, nice, it's a tough one, you got to ask for compliments.
You remembered to close it.
All right, let's move on.
You got his numbers right, though.
Uh, yeah. Item 7H on the agenda, Wilcox and Barton on behalf of Morale Mill Pond LLC requesting major site plan approval for structures of approximately 2,200 square feet and 2,300 square feet for the purpose of a restaurant with drive-through retail space and conditional use permit approval for the disturbance of wetland buffers at 10 Whitney Road in the industrial district. We have previously determined this application complete, not a development of regional impact. So we'll open the public hearing and welcome you back to the table if you could state your names for the record.
I am Cindeterio with Wilcox and Barton.
Laurie Rosio with Morale Mill Pond LLC.
And David Rosio with Morale Mill Pond LLC.
All right, we get a quick staff update on this project?
Sure, yeah, sorry, I'm trying to take minutes and do this. So yeah, this is two buildings on this property. They went before the conservation commission last week for the impacts to wetland buffers. There was no comments on that. They have several variances through the zoning board for the use and parking. And we've been working with them on some circulation issues. Staff still has some concerns with circulation. I believe they have some alternatives that they want to discuss with the board tonight. We have not, staff has not reviewed those fully, so just want to put that out there, but I know they may be planning to present those to you tonight.
Okay, dope. Okay, welcome back, tell us a little bit about this project.
So the project is at 8 and 10 Whitney Road, which is off exit 17 in the new subdivision development.
Really?
The proposal is for, let me find the site plan, the proposal is for two buildings, oh, wrong one. Sorry, let me show you the right one. There we go. Okay, the proposal currently before you is for two buildings, a restaurant with a drive-through, which is shown on the left-hand side, just to orient you, north is up in the left. The proposed retail pharmacy use is on the right-hand side of the property with a drive-through building there as well. The site is currently undeveloped, it's approximately five point acres. And there is a wetland in the back of the property that we are remaining out of, the site is out of that. And the vehicular circulation is proposed right now, so if you come down Whitney Road, the entrance is down, you'll, the entrance is down on the right. The circulation is proposed largely to be one-way throughout the site and pedestrian circulation as well. If you come across Whitney Road into the Starbucks and then across to the pharmacy as well. Landscaping is, meets the requirements of the, of the, of the site plan regulations. And stormwater management is two bio retention areas. One in this loop around by the, where the drive-through is and then a second one in front of the retail space. And then there is an infiltration gallery underneath the parking area. As Beth mentioned, there were some site circulation questions about the one-way. I'm happy to either entertain questions or to go through our, a proposed alternative for addressing some of those issues.
Okay.
Do you want to hit those or?
I, I can, I get a couple of questions. So, so coming into the property, just orienting myself here, as I come in, take a right into the property and I want to go to the proposed restaurant on the left-hand side. I just keep going around to the left, there's a little curb in the middle there. Looks, my goodness, I don't know how many cars can stack up there, 11, 12? 11 or 12 cars in there and then a bypass lane. So you order whatever you're going to order, come out of there and then you kind of take a right and then loop around in front of the new other building, up to the front and then out. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And? Four. Okay, all right, noodle on that for a minute. And then if you're coming in to use the right-hand building, you come in off the street, come straight down through in front of the new building there, in front of the existing traffic exiting out of that. And then take a left and queue up there with just one or two or three queues there. So obviously, the busy one is on the left-hand, the busy ones on the left-hand side, the slower ones on the right-hand side, whatever that building might be. And then exit and come out the same way. Correct, right?
That's correct.
Looking through that same way? Okay, questions from the board? Amanda, pull up a little closer.
Yes, Rich, I think I, I hear, I see and hear your concern too, as you come out of the drive-through and I think just instinctually, like I want to just immediately turn left to get out.
Yeah.
Instead of going around this median or around this island here. So what is your plan, because I don't, I haven't seen the signage plan to make sure people go, go out and around this island to then get out instead of what most people are just going to immediately turn left.
Right, and that was largely what the staff had questions about as well. So this perhaps is a good time to show you our proposal to address those?
It's an excellent time to show.
Okay, great. So we've always wanted the site to be one-way and, um, so what we've done is, there are signs, we've added, if you come onto the property and go to the left towards the restaurant, to the right. Towards the restaurant. To the right towards the restaurant, you can park and then add, and then back out and then leave. So that's the only two-way drive that we're proposing on this property. So as you come out of that, what we're proposing is striping and then also a stop, a stop line that's angled to help direct the traffic from there, go around. And then similarly, if you go around the drive-through of the restaurant, there will be a stop line there. And then again, the curbing and the striping will force you to go around straight essentially, to the right and then straight. And then up around the loop and then directed out towards, back towards Whitney Road. And then if you go, you choose to go through the drive-through of the retail, then the exit to that, there will be a stop line and some signage there to prevent those cars from, um, from interfering with the cars that come out. We figured that use will be less, there'll be less people going around that way, so that was the natural space for the stop sign. And then going out and heading that. We added angled parking here to help make sure that it was, it's more, it's a more natural way to leave and go around is if you have the angled parking. And then the aisle width between the restaurant and the center aisle here has shrunk to 18 feet is what we're proposing right now. The aisle width between the two angled parking spaces on the right here, between the potential retail use and the middle island, that has to remain at 24 feet to accommodate the truck, the fire truck. So we left that as 24.
Oh, look at all the hands, start ready, Matt.
Did you ever discuss about not allowing for the restaurant people to go to the right, as I'm looking at this, and circulating them all the way around the site just so there's, traffic was only going one direction? I'm just curious why they're going to go back sort of against the flow of traffic for the restaurant and then come down through and then go around?
You mean the people that are parking 90 degrees in front of, in front of the restaurant here to force them to go around the loop?
Right, I'm just curious, I'm sure you discussed it, I'm just curious as to what the discussion was.
It's inconvenient for them and quite a few of them are going to be the pickup folks, I don't use them, but there will be people.
Like the DoorDash people?
Yeah, the DoorDash people.
Yeah.
There's already three spaces dedicated to those kind of quick pickups there, so they're not going to go around the whole drive-through, even though we do now have a full bypass lane. But there's not as, certainly the bulk of the traffic is the drive-through traffic. I think it's like 90% plus of, of one of the coffee shop is drive-through traffic.
So if there were, if this were to be a Starbucks?
Yes, it is a proposed Starbucks, I think we can say that by this time.
That or Chick-fil-A, I mean, I don't know who queues for anything that long besides those two places.
Taco Bell.
I was hoping for the Chick-fil-A.
All right, I was just curious.
Sure you were.
I know it's inconvenient, I was just curious.
Yes. So, so the idea being that for those few people, hopefully they will follow the rules and turn right and go around. And I think one other thing that maybe Cindy didn't mention is we have, we have added the additional protection for the pedestrian crossing in the middle of the parking lot. Now has, you know, a curbing all around it and the full tip downs and full sidewalk through the middle. So we think we've definitely amped up the pedestrian connection between the two buildings, which we think is going to be really important because the retail building is a proposed pharmacy. So you can go there, park, put in your order for your pharmacy item and then walk across, get your coffee and go back and it'll be ready. So there should be some interaction between the two.
Can you zoom in on that building? The left, the left building? Is it appropriate to use a pointer to help? Jeff can help you with a pointer.
Where our pointer is, Allison's out six days, so.
So in this, in this revised version, you've got the little kind of, the little arc. At the very bottom there, so it's kind of, it's going to force you to turn.
One is red, one is white.
Yes.
Right there, yeah, so right there.
Yeah, just got to watch Jose.
Yeah, just want to hit Jose in the eye.
There you go.
Yeah.
So right there, yeah.
Yep, another physical.
So redesigned, so when you come out, it's going to, I mean, it's subtle, but it'll force you kind of to go to the right.
Right, and then as the staff suggested, we've put in the angled parking, which also gives you that visual cue that this is a one-way situation.
Yeah, I think that works much better. Thank you. It'd be better if the whole thing was over to the left and you came right around and went straight up, out, but I don't know if that's possible, so. Okay, other questions, I saw other hands going up. Amanda?
Well.
Pull up a little.
Again, so with drive-throughs lately, I've observed, and I was just curious if you've gotten any feedback from the potential restaurant, is that drive-throughs have in the past, you know, they make mistakes, so they have this queue line of like where you go. And I was just curious if they've made any requirements of like, they mess up your order, your order's taking too long, you pull ahead and you go to spot number one, are they going to have to go all the way around, all the way back to the, these front, front spots? Yeah, the perpendicular spots. Yes, it was kind of like a question that.
Yeah, no, they definitely would, probably pick the two spots that are closest near the sidewalk crossing the middle of the site so that they're not having to park in the very front, but certainly somebody could run out the front door and get in their order or they could go in from there.
Here, you think?
But they can't, they can't drive down, they have to go.
No, they go around, they go back in again. That's why there's that connection, you know, do you mind if I just?
Well-used pointer.
Yeah, so right here, they'll be able to make that turn. So they're not, they're not stuck having to leave the site.
Okay, Jeff?
So, um, I think this is an improvement over what's in there. I think there's still possibly some more tweaks that could be done. Did you ever consider angled parking in front of the building and forcing everybody to go out around the drive-through?
I think that's what Mr. Hicks just suggested, but.
Well, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking, because then you don't have, I am a little concerned that all this drive-through traffic now is going to go right by the front door of the pharmacy, so you're increasing quite a bit the actual pedestrian traffic interaction there, for lack of a better word. One thing I didn't see in the package is tractor-trailer truck circulation. Unless it was in there and I missed it, but I thought I only saw fire truck.
Right, we don't expect tractor-trailers to be coming here.
Since when? Have you ever been, I mean, I used to work, do a lot of projects for pharmacies, they get tractor-trailer truck deliveries.
That's not their design vehicle, this is a twenty-five hundred square foot pharmacy, it's not a fourteen thousand square foot.
Okay, and so this Starbucks does not get even small forty-foot trailer trucks at all?
They get the smaller ones, but not the tractor-trailers.
Well, that's still a type of tractor-trailer truck, it's an articulated truck that should still be run through the site to make sure it can work.
Yeah, we'll have to check the design vehicle.
We can run it through, yep.
I didn't see any indication here for snow storage. Well, we're looking at this new plan, but the old plan, I didn't see anything in there?
I'm sorry, I missed that question?
Snow storage. I don't believe I saw anything marked on the plan.
We don't have this. No, I don't see anything either.
Yeah, I know we don't have this, but on the original plan, that's what I'm saying, the package, I didn't see, so my concern is, I see the two most obvious areas, and that's the bioretention. And I don't think that would be the best use of a bioretention area is to dub salt laden potentially, or sand mix.
There's actually a lot of area to the south of the pharmacy, because we have another seventy-five foot easement area that is just open. So we have a lot of storage.
It goes downhill?
Um, the site grade goes from Whitney Road towards the back.
Right. So, I mean, I think that needs the, kind of the addressed.
We can add that, we can add that to the plan.
And just, and the only concern I have is looking at that slope. Also check the, how steep that slope is, because if you put all that snow in there, it starts to melt. Want to make sure it's not going to suddenly erode all that banking.
Right.
And around there. I mean, I have a little concern that it goes that close to the wetland, I just, my concern is they're going to push it right over the wall in some plot spots. How are propane trucks proposed to deliver without blocking your drive-throughs?
Well, it's, it, they'll deliver either off-hours or they'll come in and drive through here. The propane tank is, one of them is here, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Watch your head, little Jose. Right, I mean, I see where it is next to the dumpster by the drive-through.
There's one there, yep, and so they would pull up and tank here and.
Right, so if they tank when it's open, the drive-through, the bypass lane is now blocked for however long that takes to load.
Correct.
And then the other one is up in the corner, which would completely drop, could block access to the drive-through. You say off-hours, so I don't know that I've ever seen a propane truck out at night delivering, and I'm assuming that would be considered off-hours, so that should be looked at and addressed. The sidewalk across Whitney, I would recommend it is shifted north to create the shortest possible crossing for the pedestrian rather than right at the corner. So, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to go, I mean, maybe another ten or fifteen feet just beyond the piece, PC of the corner.
So instead of the corner, you, you think it should be over here?
And we should look at what's available, street lighting out there, if you're going to have a crosswalk in here, now that we have a lot more traffic generated. I know there's some discussion, I think with the city, about the future extension of Whitney and what's going to happen with that. There is no pavement striping between the new roundabout and this location. I was out there the other day, stopped, parked on the, the right-hand side of the road, opened my car door, stepped out and almost got hit. Because somebody was going into that driveway to the backside of Market Basket, and they were literally on the other, what would have been the other side of the center line. So I, I think it'd be, if the city's plans are too far out, maybe at least a yellow, double yellow down the road would be appropriate to this location, just to delineate.
So I don't know if you noticed that there's no parking signs on Whitney Road for that reason?
And as a planning board member, I can't pull onto the site to park. So.
Just, I mean, just, that's kind of the reason why, doesn't why it's no parking?
But the point is, is that if a car is on the other side of the road and somebody now takes a left out of this facility, you've got a potential head-on, because people don't know what side of the road to be on, because it's so wide. So all I'm asking for is three hundred feet of a double yellow. I mean, I understand the city's got some things. What's that?
It's the city's road.
But your development adding traffic to the road and.
But it's a city road, so.
My, my, my development pays taxes too, so I think they can put in a center line.
Okay. What else? Amanda?
I have a question, just, I was curious if during the design process, if the two end-use of the buildings are ultimately very close to the same square footage, has there ever been a discussion about them flip-flopping of their spaces? Like the Starbucks being over on the right side and the pharmacy being on the left? Just because it seems to make more sense traffic flow-wise. So I was just curious. And, and you landed on this, but what was the reason why it wasn't flip-flopped? First of all, that, I think we're on letter L by the time we got to submitting a site plan. So we, we had that many iterations of plans for the site. And we had several of them where the, um, where the fast food restaurant was south of the driveway. So, so the main, the, the main issue is the driveway has to be opposite interchange drive. So that's the first thing. It, it's not really, if you pull down the plan a little bit, you'll see that it, it's aligned for lots of reasons, across from another driveway. So we can't change that driveway. So that leaves only so much area to the south of that driveway and north of the easement area, which we cannot build any buildings in the easement area. And that takes up a good chunk of the property to the south of the driveway. So there was no room left to put in a building and the roughly eighteen-car queue that is required for that use. That's how we ended up with it on the north side. And even that required us, you know, doing a lot of convoluted, um, engineering to get that full bypass, which is another, a, a large area that is required.
So then your question is yes?
Yes. It was discussed, this is where you landed.
Right, there was a lot of discussion about that.
Okay, yeah?
Just one more. I know in the other, your other development, we asked for a lot of the buildings have bike racks. Is it possible that we could include something for these two as well? That'd be great. Just because I know we're trying to promote the multi-use.
Yep.
And if they're coming from one.
And we're definitely seeing more bicycle usage in the neighborhood.
Really?
Very much so.
Across the street?
Very much so.
That's good.
One other question, and, and the, we have the bus stop at the other location. So they come in the roundabout eventually, I don't know if they're doing now, but eventually some, they're going to come out this driveway? Or are they going to loop back through to the roundabout? Reason I'm asking is, I didn't know if it made sense when they turned this corner, could we consider looking at a bus stop so that these people that might be going here don't have to walk all the way, especially in the winter, to the other side? I mean, it's something to coordinate with CAT, it's probably just literally a sign. I'm not saying a shelter or anything crazy, but maybe just working with them as a possibility to consider that be the route back out if possible. That'd be great. That way, again, that multimodal, because, you know, people might want to go to this pharmacy from, you know, that area of town.
Right. Okay, anybody else from the board, staff? Do you remember, the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? All right, thank you very much for your testimony, and, uh,
Thank you.
We will close the public hearing. Uh, any other discussion, any further discussion on the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Certainly not easy to get the circulation.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I don't think it's the greatest plan, but I, I, I sat here most of the time figuring out how, how else could you do it?
No.
And to Amanda's point, I was thinking, oh, if you put this building over here, could you do it? But it's the same, it ends up in the same sneaky pattern, so.
If you consider the Burger King CBS, the drop, former, the Tropic Star development, which is, we spent months and months on that.
On Laden Run?
And it's still bad, but it works.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's tough with twelve cars queued, that's, and a bypass lane, it almost makes it, every, every different, you know, every different iteration involves this long
Right.
loop. I mean, the problem is you can't come out and go straight out, which is, which is the issue.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I have one recommendation for this evening. I would suggest we postpone this a month, because this plan we've been showing tonight was not out for public review and comment. And I don't want to have the public not be able to see this on the website, have the ability to show up and have their own comments. They saw the one that was in the package, which is completely different, has a lot different circulation, a lot different parking. And it sounds like they still have some issues to work out with staff anyways, and come back next month with a cleanup one that the public has the ability.
Yeah, I don't know that the public would be here to, to question circulation on the driveway. I don't know that there's any, I mean, it's, it is what it is from the standpoint of laying it out and putting it out there. If we've worked anything i- in the second revision, it's marketably different from the circulation, but it's still the same lot. I mean, it's still the same.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'm just questioning whether this wasn't.
I tend to agree, I think that if we think this is an improvement and nobody came out to look at this and object to this, then why would they come out to object to an improvement?
Heather?
I just want to, staff has not reviewed this, not planning staff, not engineering staff, is the first time we've seen it. The statutory requirement is, the, the logic of it is not really an issue. Like, there, you are, you're supposed, the, the plans are supposed to be noticed, whether we think that that makes sense or not. You know, this was not, this was not noticed.
It was not noticed?
Well, the, the, the different plan was not, it was not available, like Jeff is saying. It wasn't, it's a, it's a different plan that wasn't noticed. So from a statutory perspective, you know, there's a deadline, a date for materials to be submitted so that that can happen.
But, but at what point, you know, so what's the threshold for changes that would trigger a delay? Because we see proposed changes all the time in plans, and I don't know that we've sent it back for that. Well, we have a couple times, I just don't know, is there a threshold?
And it's not like staff's had a chance to make comments on it. A lot of times, we refer it back, say, and say, just work it out with staff, because there's a few minor things. This is a completely different plan from the parking lot circulation than was noticed in, and Heather's correct, statutorily.
No, I don't have a problem with that, I, I, the, the, I don't want to delay it anticipating that we're going to have ten people in the audience saying.
I guess maybe my wording was wrong.
I mean, I'm opposed, if, if you look at it and say, the plan that was presented was, wasn't a great plan, this one's better. I mean, if, to Matt's point, I think people would have come out before to say, you know, this is terrible, why wouldn't you do this, why wouldn't you do that? I get it and understand that there's, there's major changes to the plan. I don't think there are major changes in my eyes, but I see the major changes in angled-in parking and, and turning radiuses and different, different, uh, different sections of the parking lot. My concern is the flow through the parking lot, the first question I asked was the flow through the parking lot. It was bad in the other one, it's better in this one, but it's still not, it's still the same. I mean, it's just a little bit different here, a little bit different there. I get it, major changes in the plan, I don't think they're major changes, but that's, that's my view on it. Earl?
I'm confused because I did, I didn't have the new map, but I, I do want to hear staff's comments.
About, yeah.
About this plan.
Yeah.
I'm not worried that this, a change in plan is going to bring out the masses to speak against it.
That's, I guess, my point is.
But I think there's some, it, it's worthy to have staff comment on this.
Yep.
Because I don't want to, it sounds like we're trying to do their job, so I want to hear from them.
Suzanne?
Well, and I mean, I, I think when they, there are, um, requirements to have plans in at a certain time, and then you don't, and then, oh, well, we'll just get our approval anyway. I think it would be wrong to start setting that precedent, and I think staff definitely should have their professional, um, opinion based on that plan, because I think it's very different.
Yeah.
Because you, I mean, there's no landscape plan that goes with it. So I think that, I, I don't think, I don't know that we have a choice.
Okay. I'd, I'd take a motion if you want to make a motion.
Motion that we table this next month, allow the applicant to prepare a complete submittal for city staff review.
Table?
Postpone.
What's it, postpone, sorry. Still getting used to all these words, postpone.
So we've got a motion on the table to postpone?
Continue, yeah.
Continue.
Continue?
Continue?
Sorry, the best word.
So does that mean it has to be noticed or not?
No.
It's already been noticed, so that defeats the purpose of getting public.
Well, in this case, from, from the first initial argument, was, which is the masses to come out and object, it does. But the second point, which is valid, is a review by staff, is a different point. So we've got a motion on the table, anyone second?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so just, stat, you guys from, confident in what you heard? Okay. All right, so we will see you first on the agenda next month. So you heard it here first, Mr. Rassio, first on the agenda next month?
Thank you.
What about the driveway people? Harbor Street.
Yeah, yeah, well, they could be second. They weren't here, so they didn't give.
Jeff, did you get your pointer?
I didn't promise them anything.
You're going to need a.
Seven I, I heard, was delayed, we're not going to hear seven I?
No, no, they're, they're still.
I'm only kidding, wanted to see if I got any reaction from the back of the room, nothing. So let's read item seven I into the agenda, uh, yes, sir.
Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, for the, for the record, we'll, uh, we'll excuse, uh, Council Pierce, um, sorry, guys, hey. Any other recusals for the rest of the agenda? Okay, so we're going to excuse Council Pierce and we'll let you go for the night. Make sure you watch the previews on, on.
I will.
The TV, so you know what's going on with the city council request and the annual impact fee.
Yes, we have the impact fee review, and it's on the city council, you sure you want to send them home?
That's what I said, make sure you look at the impact fees when you watch it tonight on, uh, on CCTV. Okay, uh, let's read item, uh, seven I noting that, uh, Council Pierce has recused, we still have a quorum and we'll continue on with the meeting. Uh, seven I is Andy Sanborn on behalf of Big Step LLC requests comprehensive development plan approval for a phased development to construct a charitable gaming hall, hotel, restaurant and parking structure at Seven Break-A-Day, uh, Drive in the Gateway Performance District. This, um, there's no development plan, there's no determination of completeness or, uh, or development of regional impact component. So we will open the public hearing, uh, get a staff update if we could, uh, on this project, do you?
Yeah, so, so this, staff has talked with the applicant on numerous occasions, many occasions, about the lack of secondary access. If you read the report, you can see the recommendation is not to approve because of the lack of the secondary access. Uh, they subsequently, um, submitted a plan having the secondary access. We haven't, engineering hasn't had a chance to review it. We let them know, you know, we're not going to recommend that the board approve this tonight, because we haven't had a chance to fully vet it. They wanted to come anyway to show the board where they're at and show them the secondary access. So, yeah, I will leave it at that and let
All righty.
fresher people go into more detail.
I don't know that we're fresher at this point, so I'll, I'll try and be as brief as I was with the earlier presentation. So Nick Golan, TF Moran, uh, Andy Sanborn, uh, the applicant. So we've been working with the fire department to try and figure out, uh, the access concerns. There is a specific section of NFPA one, and it's actually cited in, um, Heather's memo, that they brought as a concern, that essentially gives the authority having jurisdiction the power to say, I have concerns and I'd like secondary access. We weren't sure that that was accurate, we vetted it out. So we determined that, uh, it appears that they do have the power to ask for that. As such, we have now provided it. Now, the reality is that, uh, emergency access drive does go through the city right away. So ultimately, uh, yourselves as well as the city council would be the approving authorities on that. We've resubmitted those plans as of today, so that we can meet with you in January, ideally to see our application considered complete and the comprehensive development plan approved. But knowing that this driveway, this emergency driveway would have to be something that, uh, this board agrees to, we wanted to make sure you knew this was coming, um, make sure this wasn't a concern, it was what your fire marshal requested. We've since provided it, it's our understanding it meets all the requirements of the city. Obviously, it'll be reviewed, and if there's anything I missed, Jose will point it out and we'll make any corrections. But we thought it pertinent to at least have the opportunity to meet with you and let you know that this is happening. We're still very excited about this project, I know it's been some time since we last met before you. But wanted to let you know that we've been working diligently in the shadows to try and move this forward and feel that we're finally at a point where we'll have the opportunity to do so. So relative to where that access point is, um, I'll kind of highlight it here with our, our mouse, so we can see where this central access drive is, um, and this is part of the, this is the comprehensive development plan we're looking at now. What we will do is we are going to extend that drive aisle now, such that, we'll see how well I can freehand this. You will now have an access drive, gated access drive, twenty feet wide for the fire department, meets all the necessary turning radiuses for your fire truck and get a little room to spare, that now provides that ability for an emergency egress during an emergency situation. We aligned it where we did, because that provides the best opportunity for a mass exodus, uh, as well as provide all the necessary turning movements for the fire truck. The fire marshal's concern is that if he has his, uh, equipment set up at the entry point along our driveway, that they need to be able to have the opportunity to have people exit safely. This provides the opportunity to make a right-hand turn out of the intersection, which is ideal from the standpoint of if there is congestion at the intersection of Break a Day or Loudon Road, we are channeling everyone away from that. So it's our expectation this is, uh, what is being looked for and wanted to make sure that you've had a comfort level, uh, for that element. Sorry, a little background noise. Only, I only hear well in this one ear, so pick up on it quick. But I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to chime in on this, and I know there are certain board members who, uh, have a direct interest in any transportation elements, so give you the opportunity to speak now.
Good job with the pen.
That's, you know, the hand's a little shaky at this point, but that's, that's the gist.
Good job.
Uh, it has tangents on either end, essentially platforms, top and bottom, uh, so it's consistent with what a typical driveway would be in the city of Concord. With the exception of this is for emergency access, only, so it's our understanding it doesn't necessarily apply to all the rules, but we've gone ahead and tried to design it to those rules.
And how's it gated?
Um, so Knox Box gated the top, so fire department would have the power to unlock it.
Okay. From a staff perspective, I mean, obviously you want to see, see, you know, details and turning radiuses and things like that, but from a, from a big picture perspective, we heard anything back from fire?
So Paul called me, was a kindness call me on Monday and say, you know, subject to city engineering's review, that, that fits his needs.
Okay. Um, was there any access, secondary access from the back parking lot? I can't quite see that, but I think it's all parking up there, right?
So there is two updates that we've done to the plan. During the, uh, during the future buildout, you can see there's full circulation. What we've done is trunked the parking garage so that now there's full circulation around the parking lot. And when we look at the site layout plan, we previously had this Y hammerhead that's been deleted such that there's now full circulation around the building, and that would also be a fire department access road. Obviously, we don't want patrons to be driving to the back of the building to, through loading areas or otherwise. Um, but again, that would be a gated entrance, and we've provided the appropriate turning movements to show the fire truck can make all those turns.
Even from the back lot?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
You know, he laid it out pretty seamlessly. He's like, all right, I need, uh, this is what I want, so.
So from the comprehensive development plan that you guys proposed previously, you mentioned the hammerhead changed.
Yep.
What else is tweaked or been tweaked since we saw it a few months ago?
We are also asked to add the landscaping that was shown in the color up that we had provided for our comprehensive development plan. So that information is now shown graphically as well. Um, there was also a request for a sidewalk along Break a Day Drive. You know, we've provided a sidewalk along our site driveway. Um, we've provided for a potential future sidewalk such that if and when the city builds a sidewalk along Loudon Road, there'd be the opportunity for interconnection. So I imagine that might be a point of discussion either tonight or in the future.
Okay. All right, questions from the board?
So, can you go back to the one that you had, the?
The hand sketch?
Yeah. Yeah.
There you go.
So, this kind of sounds weird, but if there's something happens right there, can the fire truck now make it for this new road? And why not bring that road out to here instead of cutting through the middle?
Sorry, I didn't realize you were using the point.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm watching you and I'm like, what's he doing? He's waving a wand. All right, go ahead, sorry.
Basically, you're saying, okay, under the future.
Yep.
Your, your access is here.
Yep.
And here. Why not, you just said you're going to shorten this to make a new road that comes around. Why not make that the emergency access?
I can't get there grade-wise. Elevationally, it ends up being a thirty-three percent road.
Wow.
So, uh, when we had originally sat down with city staff.
It's nice and flat on this grid.
Yeah, uh, there is, there is over a hundred feet of grade change across the property. So, and actually, you know, that's, that's probably a good thing to flip through. Let's just, that, those are, there's our contours. Um, so.
So you're, if, if I'm, if I could, just real quick as a follow-up, so you're telling me your parking garage, front and back, is not the same level then?
That is correct.
Okay, because that wasn't, I don't think we've discussed that previously. So I do like the fact that you've removed the hammerhead and still not, I, I like the fact that, well, you just said you're shortening it and you're putting a road around.
So what we've done is, this is now truncated.
Right.
I don't want to do too much freehand here, but this, this road now connects through here. So we've checked fire department and you can make all the turning movements you need around this.
Hang on, so if you can get to here, you're telling me you can't get to here?
Oh, no. There is, uh, approximately forty-eight feet of grade change. So if we zoom in real tight, we can see how much grade change there is actually within the right of way. And then in order to actually tie out the site and make some reasonability to try and balance the site with grades, elevationally, I can't physically get there.
Aren't you still cutting through there to do this new road?
You've got to think about the tangents, right? I need the run out.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to ask, because you're coming out of this parking lot, running a long break a day, and then coming back to Loudon Road.
Yep, so from a grade standpoint, one of my lower elevations is actually in that central mass.
Okay, I, so your, your parking lot drops, okay.
Yeah.
Now.
Thank you, this makes more sense.
I figured the grading, what, since we're talking about grading, let's look at the grading.
No, 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 and that's fine. I just, now, the other thing, the big grading question, and I've asked this before, and I don't think you've provided the letter yet to staff.
You don't think, I avoided answering one of your questions. That doesn't sound like me.
Is, if, I would like to know what DOT's opinion and what their discussion is.
Sure.
On the grading issue, because it affects the entire second part of the CDP.
Be happy to answer that question, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a nice email from our now commissioner, Bill Cass, stating that he feels this is doable, and we'd have to obviously follow through the appropriate channels. But he did not feel that there was any deal breakers for that moving forward, and I would be happy to provide that correspondence to the city.
Yeah.
And, and my understanding is it's not a full takedown of the hill.
Correct.
There is still going to be a fifteen to twenty-foot difference between your property and right of way, so it's not a clear cut sight line right in.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring down that elevation to a grade, um, that still provides an appropriate buffer to the highway. The reality is you can't do work within the highway within, what is it, thirty feet or so anyway, so we're not going to propose to do that. So to make sure that stormwater runoff could be filtered into the site, so, which was one of the benefits, um, because we're really lessening the impact on the drainage infrastructure for the DOT. It's going to make it easier for them to maintain with less stormwater going that way.
Thank you. I just.
Nope.
I had run into Mr. Cass at an event and we discussed it, so full disclosure.
Good.
So I kind of knew you had something. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not being full of it.
No, 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 you weren't.
I tried to be very honest, especially in public opinion.
I just didn't, I hadn't seen it as part of the package, so I wanted to make sure it got in the record, because if we are looking at a CDP that has a second phase.
Yeah, you got to make sure we can actually do it. That's the reasonable request.
So again, with a comprehensive development plan, you know, it's your first, first view at it. We'll get a chance to kind of pick it apart.
I bet we were doing that tonight.
At the next, at the next phase, but any other, any other comments or questions or concerns?
Can we straighten the entrance drive? Make it more ninety degrees to breakaway?
So in part, that's provided for fire department access. If I go straight ninety, they're going to have a harder time. We originally proposed a thirty-foot wide drive. We were asked to revise it to twenty-eight, which made it a little bit more difficult for those turning movements, so that's where we landed.
My only concern is the speed at which people are going to enter and exit that location.
Fair. Um, I would say that given the short length of Break a Day Drive, that they aren't going to have much opportunity to get up to speed. And ideally, they're not zipping around the parking lot, but so noted.
I guess it's not just speed. I'm worried that given the angle, they'll cut across into the outbound lane rather than coming up, making a ninety, they'll kind of cut the corner. I guess maybe it's not fully at speed, but, you know. I, if there's anything that could be due to tweaking it, soften it a little bit, maybe not make it quite seem like, you know, you don't have to stop at the stop sign because you're making a right only.
All right.
We will evaluate.
Yeah, that's all right. Just take a look.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any member of the audience have any questions or comments about this application? Yeah, sir, come on up. I'm going to have you guys step back. How are you?
Hi.
If you could state your name for the record?
My name is Bruce Curry. I, uh, live about a half mile away from the proposed development, uh, on Josiah Bartlett Road, across three ninety-three. So my concerns are general, uh, rather than specific to the site.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
We are very close friends. Should I?
That's fine. No, you're fine. No, you're fine. We won't hold that against you, Mr. Curry, just wanted to let you know.
He does. You don't have.
I, I might, but the other board members will, will give you the honest, they'll give you the hon, the benefit of the doubt, but please continue.
So as the crow flies, I'm about half a mile from the, uh, proposed development, uh, across three ninety-three. So I have concerns about the, uh, uh, increased traffic flow, uh, in the area and, uh, and more generally, um, uh, given that this is a gateway from the east for the city, um, I, I'm not sure it's the best use of the site, um, uh, to have a casino. The first thing that people see when they come in from, uh, the seacoast. It doesn't convey the best image for the capital city that we should want to convey, I think. Finally, um, in terms of the casino, um, gaming is inherently a regressive way to raise revenue, tax revenue, and, um, given the proliferation of gaming, uh, and, uh, online and, and onsite gaming, we may already be reaching, uh, a point of diminishing returns to add yet another casino in the, in the area. And, um, lastly, if this is such a great idea, there is a, a large, uh, underutilized parcel just down the street on Loudon Road that, uh, uh, could easily be, uh, reconfigured to as a casino.
We mentioned that. You didn't watch the last meeting and you didn't hear us say, why didn't you go to the Stiefel Gate Mall? And Mr. Sanborn addressed it and tried numerous times to do it, and your point's well taken. Why cut, and I think, uh, Mr. Santa Cruz mentioned what, you know, why cut virgin land and open this up and put it here when you've got a, you know, perfectly good building that, you know, could be ripped down and, and replaced? So, point taken, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Curry? Thank you very much for your testimony, and, uh, do, do stay in touch with it. We'll, we'll have public hearings again, uh, with more details. If you could just sign in, Mr. Curry, on that sheet somewhere right over there, that'd be great. Any other member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Um, what's on our docket for this, Heather, as far as, uh?
You don't have to do anything.
A report, so we don't have to do anything. And again, uh, noting that, um, you know, we, we'll get a second crack at this, third crack at this.
January eighteenth.
The January eighteenth meeting, we'll have, uh, another shot at it. Okay? We're good, so we'll close that public hearing. You're all set. Thank you very much for your testimony and for, uh, for your patience getting us to seven I. Can't promise where you're going to be next time around, but we'll, we'll do our best. Okay, a couple of quick items on the agenda. Run to the other business. We've got an annual impact fee review.
Uh, yep, it's that time of year again where we, uh, let you know what the fee is. Would be increased to if we kept pace with inflation. Um, so in the report, it notes what those, what those fees would be, what that increase would be. And as last year, we did not recommend the increase because of, uh, you know, the housing, need for housing and not trying to make it more difficult for folks. So we made a similar recommendation this year to keep the fees the same, and we need from the board a determination either way whether they recommend. So council is the one that makes this determination, votes one way or the other. The board makes the recommendation to council on whether to increase the fees, increase them to, uh, keep pace with inflation or some other amount or, or do nothing.
So I just want to direct you to page two where it says if the city would like the impact fees to keep pace with increased cost of construction, the transportation facility impact fee should be increased by thirty-one percent to reflect the rate of inflation for highway construction costs from July fifteenth to twenty twenty-two. And the recreation facility impact fee should be increased by thirty percent, uh, to reflect inflation from Ja, July two thousand fourteen to July twenty twenty-two. Please note the timeframes for the fee updates vary because of two different indexes are used. Yeah, again, I'll throw it out there. Do we want to continue with, uh, with recommending no increase, uh, to the city council? Or would we like to recognize an increase? Suzanne?
Eventually, it'll catch up with you, right?
Uh, well, it depends. Yeah, I mean, it depends.
But I mean, I'm just wondering if there should just be.
A small.
A small increase so that it doesn't.
An incremental, so that it suddenly doesn't get to be forty, fifty, and then to get there, we're going to be like, we can't do it because no one will ever agree to it. But if we can go up.
Five percent?
Even five percent, ten percent, whatever would be reasonable, because if we don't start catching up now, prices don't go down. Construction's not going to go back down. That's inherent, and if we keep.
And just raise taxes?
If this, this gap's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger at some point, to the point where, I don't want to say it's a joke, but it is, you know? So I.
What was your number? Um, thirty-one, you said?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one point two.
Impact fees to keep pace with inflation. I mean, that's not realistic. We're not going to recognize that, but.
Should we go halfway?
Well, I don't even think you're going to go halfway. I mean, at three, three to five percent is.
I would say five, just from being in the industry, we've seen eight to nine.
This is a city council recommendation. They're inherently.
Going to make the decision.
Going to make, no, they're inherently probably going to, going to not make a decision and leave it at zero, but that's.
I, I agree with you.
I will always vote against any increase in impact fee, so I'll just be a no for any increase.
So. I, I do not know complexities, financial complexities ins and outs of impact fees. I do know that the impact fees are a very small portion of usu, of usually the, the projects that they're used for. But, you know, council, uh, a, a committee of council recently looked at the impact fees, decided they wanted to keep them. Um, I don't know that they considered whether or not to continue increasing them or keeping them the same. Um, I almost want to ask our.
All right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would, I would hesitate to ask.
If he has, if he has any thoughts or opinions on, on a moderate increase.
I would hesitate to keep this in our planning board purview at the moment.
If you think that the council's going to do what they want anyway.
I mean, again, I.
I think they would listen to.
No, I think they'll listen and understand.
They'll listen to it. And again, that, that idea isn't to not have impact fees at all, but it's cost of, it's a, it's a direct cost for development. Direct cost for that new building on Main Street exponentially is now five percent more expensive in, in, in some cases because of, because of the impact fees.
You know, they're exempt from it.
It, well, they are, and that's a bad example, but, uh, you know, the, I don't know of you in that one, but.
A residential, single residential home because it's such a.
Right.
Small cost compared.
Five percent.
Yeah, I, I just.
You've got a million-dollar development or a five-million-dollar development, it's, it's substantial.
But is it five percent of the overall cost or is it five percent of a portion of the project cost?
Depending on.
What determines that?
Right, how is the impact fee, like, is it right off of what the development cost is or is it? Right, so it's not a one-to-one, it's five percent of five million. It's five percent of something lesser.
The mechanics of how they were originally adopted, you know, originally set, I, I will say I do not know. But they were set based on, we hired a consultant, uh, so I know that much. We hired a consultant and they looked at, you know, industry standards. And I don't know the number of, of how that original number was set, but since then.
Development.
Those were the fees that were set, that were adopted. Uh, since then, we have, you know, tracked the inflation of construction costs in response to those original fees, which.
But I calculated based on square footage of the develop, what's?
Dwelling unit, number of dwelling units. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So it's really, we're talking residential, not commercial.
Commercial's exempt right now. Commercial was based on square footage, but residential's exempt. Do, dwelling, the residential was, was originally based on square footage as well, and that it changed at some point to number of dwelling units. But the commercial was square footage and the commercial is exempt, yes.
So when I had an addition, I paid an impact fee on very small increase of actual living space from the original. And now I wouldn't probably have to pay for that, but hey.
No, I'm just.
So what, what, let's not get too far down in the weeds again, but the, are we comfortable with recommending a three or five percent increase or no increase at all?
I would be.
I, I agreed, I agreed with your comment, is that at some point, we're going to have to deal with it. I mean, we're going to have to play catch-up, correct?
But that's making the assumption that we should have impact fees in the first place.
At all.
Well, the thing is, the money does go towards improvements that.
Infrastructure.
We all, we all benefit from, but there are, but the burden's on residential instead of commercial, which, truth be told, square footage is always, not always, take that back. A larger percentage of square footage is on commercial versus on, like, what do we see today? That came across from the art alleyway or, you know, with the, the pop fire, you know?
Fifty thousand square feet on the, on the rental floors.
I'm just, you know, to my, to, to Matt's point is that why does the burden always have to be on the? I'm just, you know, to my, to, to Matt's point, is that why is the burden always have to be on the residential? Why is there no burden on commercial when they have a larger square footage impact?
Again, it's a development number. It's a, it makes it more economically viable for developers to come in and develop in our city versus somebody that's gonna impact fee him to death for this fee, that fee, and every other fee in between, as she rolls her eyes at me.
But, but think about it, it's also the tax base on those commercial properties is usually tax rate is much, it's diff, because there's so much more square footage.
Alright.
The values are, but anyways, my only concern is, Matt, is you say you don't want impact fees at all. Not increasing this is a good way to basically say, we're gonna eliminate, because at some point, it's gonna be such a big gap that I can.
I think they, I think we're on that track anyways. I think we're on the track to eliminate the impact fees completely.
Well, then let the council do it.
Really, that's why I say, if we, if we recommend it, I don't think they're gonna approve it.
See, he left?
Yeah.
Well, you decide. Someone make a motion. Let's go.
I don't really think it's a motion thing. I think it's just.
No, we need to, we need to, no, yeah, we do.
Yeah, you have to make a motion, a recommendation.
Or the records, or a record. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we don't, we don't recommend an increase.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one no, so that motion passes, so no increase.
Thank you. Wait, wait, who, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I made the motion. David seconded it, and, uh, Jeff disagreed. So, one item left on the agenda. Hang with us for a second here. So, uh, this is item nine on our other business. Request for support, uh, for the city of Concord's congestion mitigation and air quality. Aptly named the CMAQ program. Uh, application for the construction of capital improvement project CIP number thirty-one at Broadway-West Street intersection improvements, also known as McKee Square. So, if you could let us know what that is, Heather, and I think it's a letter, right?
Yeah, so this is a, an application that the city is submitting to, for a grant for the McKee Square CIP. It's the one that's been in there for a while, for the roundabout improvement.
It is the roundabout, okay, 'cause for a while, those talked to go back to Signal.
The, the design itself is not settled on. It's, right now, there are a couple of different options in there, but to make the application, it doesn't have to be settled to that degree of detail. So, it could be any, a number of different things. We don't need that level of specificity to make the application. But, the city is making the application, and so engineering was seeking planning board support, um, for, for, to improve the application.
Okay.
And that's really just a matter of, um, the chair signing a letter of support, which we can provide you with.
Yeah, so any, any opposition to that from the board's perspective?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take it from there. Um, we good?
Yep.
Good with that? Uh, any other business?
I don't know if you wanna make a motion to, that the board supports the application.
Well, for the record, the board supports the, the application, but it'll still come from me, so. Okay.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
Yeah, you really can declare. Okay, thanks.
Second.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Rachel'll sign it.
And I'll sign it. Put my name on it. Okay, any other business which may legally come before the board? So, we've got a short seventy-five slide presentation that we wanna go through. Alright, other than that, well, maybe, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for your diligence tonight.